I think I got any email from her.
Ready?
I didn't get it.
Okay, I call to order the senior work session meeting on January 31st, 2023, which was originally recessed from January 25th, or excuse me, recessed from January 17th, and then again on January 24th and 25th. And so we're here on the 31st to continue our work session discussion with department heads. I don't have any announcements or anything other than I think everybody pretty well knows the routine now. Today we have Lori here starting out with animal control. And Lori, we've got an hour set aside, so we'd like a few questions at the end, and you'd talk all the way up until that time if you need to. It seems like most of them have been running the full hour, so.
We planned for this one to run just a little over.
Okay.
So we've notified the other department heads, so we're okay to go up to 10:30 if we have to.
Okay, good. Lori, the floor is yours.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Let me ask one question before she starts. Do y'all want to ask questions as she goes, or do you want to wait till the end?
Whatever she prefers.
You can ask questions as we go, that's fine.
Let's just do that, I think that worked. I think that works better.
If you wait to the end, you probably forget it.
And also while we're talking about that, don't wait for me to recognize, if you have a question, just shout it out, so we can keep things moving quickly.
I'll never get a word in edgewise from Keith.
Okay, good morning.
I'm a kettle black, huh?
Put together just a little packet for you, just to kind of give you an overview of our department, what we're responsible for, and what I feel like is needed the most for our department to run smoothly. Our mission, of course, is to enforce the county and state codes, the rules and regulations to investigate animal neglect and cruelty cases for the purpose of protecting the health and the safety of Stokes County's human and animal residents. We enforce for a county, of course, over 46,000 people. We are pretty much at the beck and call of the public, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We respond to the public request for services as far as animal bites, stray animals, aggressive animals, injured animals, any type of bites where we have to take animals, you know, into the shelter to be quarantined, sometimes we have to do home quarantine animals if they're current on rabies vaccinations, which is unfortunately a huge issue in our county. Are pretty much just people being responsible with their animals and having them vaccinated for rabies, which is required by state law. We do, however, any call that we get, that we go on, we ask for proof of rabies, which they have to provide a certificate that matches the description of the animal. A lot of times, they're not current. So by law, we have to write them a written notice to comply within 72 hours to have their animal vaccinated. So there's a whole lot of that in this county, unfortunately. And I think one way to resolve some of that issue is to hold rabies clinics, which I plan to do. I've reached out to DGA, which is a mobile spay neuter rabies clinic, and they're going to plan to come out this spring and set up, hopefully at Poplar Springs Elementary School, and do a rabies clinic for the county. So we'll, you know, probably do nail trims and rabies vaccinations and possibly microchips as well during that time. We also investigate cruelty cases, we prepare court cases, go to court, testify, ask for restitution for the county. Any animal that comes into our shelter, whether it's on a quarantine or a stray hole that an owner reclaims, we do charge $10 a day board and any veterinary expenses that we incur. So we do ask for restitution when we go to court on the cruelty charges. We have a very small staff compared to the population of the county and the population of the county that owns animals. We pick up injured animals in the middle of the night, animals that have been hit by cars, that show up sick or possibly rabid. We seize animals sometimes that are neglected or that have had intentional cruelty inflicted upon them, unfortunately. But we pretty much, like I said, run 24/7 responding to emergencies with a very small staff. Our shelter is extremely outdated by decades. It was built, I believe, in 1983. We have 12 dog kennels for the entire county, which stay full 99% of the time. Two of those kennels we have to use for bike kennels by law. And then we have 12 cat kennels, and two of those we have to use for bike quarantines as well. So we're just very limited on resources in our department, which has really caused a big strain on the staff. We need more staff, definitely, and desperately, but we also are limited on space, which is why a new shelter is so extremely important.
Can you tell us what your staffing is?
Yes, so I've got that listed for you. We currently have myself, and then I have two officers. One of those is experienced, Adam Teague, he's experienced, and then we have a new officer, Bobby Smith, who is catching on fast, doing a really good job, but he is still in training. And that's it. So the three of us run, we rotate shifts, running 24 hours a day for seven days straight, which means you don't have a day off for 14 days straight. And it causes fatigue, it causes, you know, compassion fatigue, burnout. Our staff is just extremely tired right now because we are, we're running so hard. We took back over enforcement not too long ago from the sheriff's office. They had two deputies that solely were for the animal welfare division. So when we took that back over, we didn't acquire those two positions, of course, but we did acquire all of the influx of calls. So I found some reports back from 2017. And for an entire month, there were 73 calls total for the shelter. And there were two dispatch emergency calls in the middle of the night for on-call. That number, we get over 73 calls a day now at the shelter, and sometimes we get three or four calls in the middle of the night. I've actually received three calls within probably four hours, emergency calls. So when you're on-call, you run all night long, and then you come back into work at 8:30, and you work a full day, and then by the time you get off work, you may be on dispatch again on another call and run. So it's extremely fatiguing to be on-call with the short staff that we have.
Would it make sense to, maybe you've looked at this, but, I mean, since, I mean, sometimes when it comes to staffing, if you're so short-staffed, and then you have so many calls to service that are coming in, is there any way, would it make sense to maybe go to each one of your staff members go to 12-hour shifts, stagger? So in other words, until we get this situation, the manpower and the way we want to go, where if you stagger your 12-hour shifts, at least if you have someone working a regular shift, so let's say if you have someone that I don't know what time, you know, you'd have to start the shift, let's say you start to sniff it, we have one 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, then the other one come in at 11:00 and work 11 until 11:00 at night, would that give you some relief? At least you'd have somebody on the road, so the only part you really have is an on-call you'd have to worry about would just be in that gap.
Yeah, we've looked at different aspects of it, and it's just, it's hard to do with three people. One is because I think one of the biggest complaints I get from my staff is they're working too many hours, they're fatigued, and that we don't have enough help. So we've looked at different aspects of on-call, and part of the issue too with them is that they feel like they don't have an outside life out of work because we are working so many hours because we're so short-staffed. So if we do that, there's not really a way to say, if you want to plan a day off on a Saturday to go out of town. Like, we can't really do that because we're rotating so often, it's hard to plan in advance. So we've looked at different aspects of doing it, and we don't really find a way where we can have life outside of work unless we plan it in a seven-day span, which that's how it's always been. I have looked at other animal control departments in other counties and the way they run theirs, but they have a much larger amount of staff to rotate, so they're not working so often. And I think it's just because we have so few officers to cover such a large.
Do you have one vacancy right now?
Uh, we do. We have one vacancy that I am posting everywhere to try to get help. I think one of the issues too that we have, and I've put in your booklet here, county comparisons on pay scales for animal control officers, so it's a little difficult to find one that is experienced to come to work for less money than other counties are paid. So that's another issue, you know, that we have, trying to find someone with experienced help.
I think that, and I don't know what the official county policy is on this, but, I mean, I'm used to if there's a demand, and if you get an applicant that has got the experience and is qualified, that we wouldn't, I mean, why would we have to start them at the beginning range, the minimum pay?
You don't.
Yeah, we don't have to start them at minimum pay, but even our, I guess, top pay is not as much as some other counties.
What's the starting pay right now?
About 31.8, I believe, for an animal control officer.
What is it top out at?
That is... I think the top is around 38.
About what, 38?
No, I think it's more than that. It's, I think that there, I want to say like, because I think midpoint.
I was gonna say the midpoint range.
Midpoint is around like 41.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the officers, midpoint's around 41.
That'd be awful short.
I don't have it with me.
Starting at 31 and capping at 38.
Midpoint's around 41, and so I think that the maximum of it is somewhere around the 48 range. I can confirm that for sure, but I know midpoint is 41 something. So, and in our current policy, if there is somebody that has the qualifications, then Lori can make a recommendation to hire that person up to the midpoint, as long as I'll sign off on that.
Which I have done, yeah.
Anything above the midpoint would have to come in front of you, as far as, you know, for you to prepped off on that. But, yes, there is flexibility there, some.
Just to give you an example, like, right now, the Guilford County, which is pretty stationary operation facility, but in the past, I think a year and a half, I mean, even compared our job description on our hiring of what we're looking to hire for, same position almost word for word as what the job description is, and their starting pay for that is $35,000. And then ours is 31. So I would think that, but the big difference is, of course, is it's very easy because they push stuff out. Whereas, I mean, if I hadn't went exactly to the county website looking for vacancies, I wouldn't even know about it. Which, but it's not unusual because that's pretty much how it is here in Stokes County.
Yeah, that went on indeed. We have it shared on the county Facebook, on the animal shelter Facebook. We posted it pretty much through all of our ways that we can post it, as far as that goes. And also just calling around, you know, anywhere, I mean, she's even went as far as to try and recruit people from, she knows from other places, states, that would be interested in moving here possibly, you know, just putting it out there.
Let me have a question. You said earlier you transferred the enforcement back to you guys. They had two positions full-time doing that?
Yes, sir.
So if you look at your total percentage of work, how much of a percentage of that total is the enforcement part?
I would, just for, as far as animal control officers, I mean, that's the majority of it.
Oh, is it really?
It is, yeah, the enforcement.
You have three people to do it without enforcement, and all of a sudden you get this enforcement mission back, which I want to get you to define that in a minute, but, and then no positions to go with it. I mean, that doesn't even make any sense. What exactly is the definition of enforcement as it applies to what you're doing?
So enforcement applies to all county code and all state code regulations. I mean, any rules and regulations when it comes to animal control that we have to enforce. And the sheriff's office, you know, kind of took that as a separate entity under the sheriff as an animal welfare division.
Yeah.
So any complaints, animal welfare checks, any type of concerns like that of cruelty, neglect, anything, came through the sheriff's office.
Okay.
And then we took it back over, like I said, fairly recently, and the number of calls just increased drastically to the point to where the girl who answers our phones, she can't even keep up. Some days, she's not even able to get all the calls entered into the system to dispatch it to the officers because the phone has rang so much all day that she can't possibly keep up the entries, which is where I was going to next.
Okay, go ahead.
As far as, Mandy Dodson is the one who answers our phones and kind of works the front desk, but her official title is kennel attendant, because there's never been a title for like an office manager or a clerk or anything like that. So she's technically a kennel attendant, but she answers the phones, does intakes, adoptions, transfers animals to rescues and things like that. So what I would like to have is a position I would like to put in place is a dispatcher, someone who solely answers the telephones, dispatches the officers, and then if there's any time that the phone isn't ringing, which is extremely rare, you know, can do computer entries and things like that that we need. So as of right now, she is a kennel attendant. I would love to change her position to be an office manager, and then have a dispatcher only to answer the phones and dispatch, because that position alone is a full-time job, just answering the telephones and dispatching officers. Because once a call comes in, they take all the notes, they enter everything in the system, and then it gets dispatched to whichever officer runs that area. So that is a full-time job, because we have one phone line coming into the shelter, and it stays busy pretty much all day long, to the point where we can't, those of us who are not on the phone, we can't call out because we don't have a way to call out, because the phone line is constantly busy because we do only have a.
Only got one line?
Correct, one line for the shelter. And, you know, the public stays really agitated because they can't get through it a lot of times, and it's because there's so many calls coming in, you know, as soon as she takes that call, hangs it up to enter it, the phones already ring it again. It stays that busy over there.
Does it take her to enter a call when she's taking down all the regular information?
I mean, it could take up to five minutes, because normally what she will do, we don't have access to the CAD system, so what we try to do is to keep our officers safe, is she goes in and she will pull the address up on GIS, print that map off, so it can kind of show the location, what it looks like, so we'll kind of know what type of environment we're going into, whether it's in the middle of the woods, you know, a mile off the road, or whatever the case may be. So she does pull up the GIS, and then she enters everything that the complainant tells her. And she enters their information, what type of complaint it is, if it's 10 dogs chained in the backyard, you know, that are underweight, window shelter, or whatever the case may be, she enters all that information in, and then it gets dispatched to the officer. She also prints it off and puts it on our board, so that way, if we're in the office, we can just grab it off of our board when we're going out to run the next calls.
Shannon, can you check with our 911 director and see how many CAD licenses that we have open?
I've asked for, I've asked for, I've asked before for them to, we've had this discussion about putting them on, but I will ask again.
Yeah, what about calls that do come in through 911? How do those get to you?
911 actually communications calls us.
Okay.
They call us.
The phone?
They do, yeah. We have radios, we don't have our own talk station, so, our talk channel, so these are only for emergency uses only. And we do go out, there's a lot of areas in Stokes County that has no cell phone reception. So if we're on a call and say we go up to a porch to knock on the door, and five dogs, aggressive dogs come up at us, and we're cornered on the porch, and we have no cell service, we're pretty much on our own to get out of that situation.
Talk about that.
Because we don't have a line of communication.
I know sometime before we finish today.
Yeah, yeah.
So going back to the positions, like I said, I would love to have just a dispatcher that is solely their job is to answer the phones and dispatch the calls. It's hard because we have so few staff that there's so much to do in there, and it's so constantly busy, it's almost like they can't focus on their particular job because they're having to help out here and here and here. Then we also have a kennel attendant, her name is Brittany, she cleans the kennels, she walks all the dogs every morning, cleans the kennels, feeds everybody, helps give meds when needed. She's working pretty much about six days a week, because we need help on Saturdays because we're open to the public from 9:00 to 12:00. And a lot of the public, they work during the week, so they can't come in during weekdays, so the only time they have a chance to come in is on a Saturday. So Saturdays are usually pretty hectic around there, and there's only one officer there and then one other staff member, which is Brittany, to take care of all the animals. So if you, you know, if you get there at 8:00 and we open to the public at 9:00, we're not near doing all the morning chores before, there's maybe sometimes eight people coming in the door, and you just have to stop everything and get it done. But thankfully, we have an amazing team of volunteers that come and help us, and we could not at all do our job without them. It's just too busy and too hectic, that we wouldn't be able to do what we do without our volunteers. They're amazing. The other employee that I have is Natalie Johnston. She's a, what we call a medical manager, her official title is kennel attendant, but she does all of the medical intakes. So we started every animal that comes in the door, we are vaccinating for rabies if they don't have one, for distemper, we are treating for fleas, for any type of parasites. They're getting aboard a Tella, which will hopefully combat kennel cough in the kennels, and they're getting microchips. So every animal that comes through our shelter now is microchipped, so if they get picked up somewhere, we know who they belong to, and that has been a tremendous help. Microchips cost us less than $6 apiece, so that has really helped reunite a lot of animals that they may, you know, run out the door in their new home and get lost or something like that, but it's really been a big help. So two of my positions that are technically kennel attendants really are not kennel attendants, but there's never been a position for what they do, so.
So how long have you been with animal control?
Well, I took on this position in July.
July, okay. So then of your kennel attendants, how long have they been with us?
Let's see, Natalie started, I think, October, and then October. Brittany started a little before Natalie started, and then Mandy came on board. Let's see, Mandy's been there, I'm trying to think.
It was about the same time, about November.
I was gonna say, yeah, they all started about the same time. But we, I will tell you, for what we have to do every day, I have the most amazing staff. Like, that shelter has completely turned around. We keep it clean, we keep the animals clean, the animals are getting walked three times a day, where before, they were lucky to get a walk. We also have a play yard now that's a large fenced-in area, and every day the dogs get their own time to go out and exercise and play ball and just get stimulation that they normally would not have gotten just sitting in the kennel all day. So it's been such a huge improvement for the animals of this county, and I just can't say enough about the staff I have. They're tired, they're fatigued, but they're wonderful, and we just, we're very blessed to have the staff that we have, because they work so hard.
So how did, did that just apply for, in other words, do you see an advertisement, and they say, hey, that's all I've been looking for?
Well.
And they come in and applied, or what?
Some of them, so Brittany, Brittany, I think, saw the ad and applied, and then Natalie, I actually reached out to Natalie, she was the medical manager in Forsyth County, at Forsyth County Animal Control for a long time. She actually had worked in Stokes before as an animal control officer several years ago, and I had worked with her because I was contracting at that time, and reached out to her to see if she would be interested, and she was. So she came to work for us, and then Mandy was, she was actually in payroll here for many years in Stokes, and just decided to transfer over to a different department.
I guess I just want to make sure that, because, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean, country girls, country boys, I mean, they love animals, especially country girls, and, I mean, I, at times, I know we have to turn people away for wanting to work at least part-time, if not, if not full-time. I mean, with the, so the people that are, you know, that are going to college, that are studying animal science or agriculture, I mean, we're not, we got a lot of colleges around here. I mean, have we?
We don't really have an issue filling the kennel attendant jobs at all.
Yeah, I don't have an issue.
People, we have a waiting list of that people wanting to work there in that position.
Yeah, I have a waiting list of people, yeah. I have, like, one girl who is gonna be absolutely fabulous if I could hire her as a kennel attendant. She volunteers now, she's been volunteering for several months, and she comes in, and I don't have to ask her to do anything. She sees something that needs to be done, and she jumps on it. And she's already put in an application and is ready to turn in her two-week notice at her job if I could open a position up for her.
So here's, in a nutshell, so if the board can squeeze enough money to start getting you on the right staffing level, in my mind, or the way that I would support that would be that we got to change how we do business a little bit, you got to go to shift work. That's because we're never going to give you enough staff to where you can not have, you know, where you just, you're just never going to have enough staff where it's going to have luxury. But I think that right away, we can probably give you enough staff to get you operating right, but you've got to look at shift work. Not, you know, everybody can't come in at the same time, everybody can't go home at the same time, talking about the whole, the whole agency. And part of that staffing is, is you got to make sure, and I know you're going, I mean, you're living it every day, but for somebody that is looking like me on the outside end, I'm a numbers type of person, so I need to know, you know, what the call volume is during what times, during what day, then we should do the same thing about the shelter work. I think that, you know, in the research I've done recently on animal control, you know, based on our plight that we have here, is that everything, pretty much, if you're, if they're at an adequate staffing level at least, and got a decent facility, and I know we don't, is that the only thing that you have to make an appointment for when you come, when you come to an animal control facility basically, is if you're surrendering an animal, then you have to make an appointment. Anytime else, you can come, it's open.
Yeah, and that's pretty much how we operate. We do owner surrenders on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and people. and Thursdays. And, and people call in to schedule those times. But the issue with that is that we're always full. Like we are always full. So people get frustrated. And, you know, we have to go to bed at night or at least try when people say, well, if you don't come get this dog, I'm gonna shoot it. And we have nowhere to put it because we have 10 kennels for the entire county. We're just so limited.
Is there any way that we can contract out to a boarding facility that would meet the standards that are set forth of housing some of these?
To my knowledge, according to the Department of Ag, I don't believe so. We have, you know, we have strict guidelines that we have to abide by through the state. And, and there's not really a boarding kennel in Stokes County that we could access.
Those are full too, a lot of times. I did a backup plan that weekend of the weather with a, with a boarding place where in case our power went off over there, because we don't have a way to keep anything going. There's no generator, there's nothing there. And so we were full of animals and that was a bad weekend around Christmas when it was so cold and windy and the power was off. I did have a backup plan with a kennel that would let us use their space if we had no power. Luckily, that didn't happen.
Because we can't even access water when we don't have power at the shelter.
And I agree about the shift work thing. My goal would be to, to get it right sized, to get the right positions in there, like call them what they are, get the right job description, the medical managers, the dispatcher, the office manager, get the other officer hired. If you had another attendant in there who you could stagger, my goal in this, for the weekends especially, is, is to take the officers off coming to the shelter multiple times on the weekends. Right now, pretty much, they're coming on Saturday mornings at 8:30, Sunday, or Saturday afternoons at 4:00, 4:30, Sundays at 8:30, Sunday afternoons at 4:30. Volunteers are meeting them there, doing all that. If I'm there and I have like myself and my daughter, I will tell the officer on call, don't come. I'll do everything. And then you don't have to worry about coming over here and take four hours and hopefully you won't get a call and you can take a break. My goal would be to get a, a staff member there who could do that no matter who's volunteering, if it's not me, and not have them doing those on-call pieces because that takes away a lot of hours that they're having to, obligated to that. So if you just had another person you could rotate through to be there. Right now, we don't have that. We just have Brittany who's doing some Saturdays sometimes. But if you give her a day off during the week to compensate for that, then they're behind in the shelter because now they can't do the medical and do all the animals. And it's, it's kind of a puzzle to.
It is. And, and as far as the shift work, I completely get that. It's just that like right now, I have myself and two other officers and we have so much space to cover. We're running like wide open every single day. So if there was only one or two officers there during the day, we wouldn't be able to, I mean, we can't even answer all the calls right now, to be honest with you. We, we're backed up on calls.
We gotta prioritize. I mean, and I'm not saying that.
And we do try to triage the calls.
Yeah. So I mean, you gotta prioritize. You'll never have enough staff and, same thing in law enforcement, you'll never have enough staff and to, you know, to do.
Assess the risk.
But anyway, I, I don't want, just be thinking in advance about, along the lines, you know, I mean, I just want to make sure. And sometimes you have to try stuff. And if it don't work, I mean, okay, we go and they try something else. It can't be the same old, same old. At least not with me.
I get that totally. And I have tried to get a count on the calls that come in. I tried to have Mandy start counting. She can't even keep up. The phone rings non-stop. But I did get in touch with Spectrum through Glinda and they're, they don't have a way to track how many calls we get a day. So we, we have tried to reach out to get that information, but it's, they don't, they don't do that.
We're, we're, we're gonna, you know, we're going to, we're gonna modernize animal control. And that one line is ridiculous. I mean.
It's absolutely ridiculous. And it, and it's, when you have to call out, it's even worse. But honestly, with only one person answering the phone and processing adoptions and handling the public, if half the full lines were ringing, she can't answer them. So then they're still going to voicemail. And that's, it's, a switchboard would only work if you had a dispatcher sitting in a room doing nothing but that. Because otherwise, I mean, a typical adoption takes an hour to process by the time you do the meeting with them and do the paperwork and all the references and all that. And so, and then all that time, the phone's ringing. So she can't.
I wonder, again, you know, we've talked about this in other meetings with other departments. But I mean, this is just a quick thought. I mean, is there any way that we can't put a form on the, on the computer for animal control that says, hey, you know, fill this out, interactive, where they can fill it from wherever and, and then you would have it right then and there. And so then if you can't answer the phone right away and if you go, because I'm sure that if we put the word out and everything, I mean, most people don't want to talk to people live anywhere. They'd be ready to go in and do a form. Just a short form and a short description and a callback number.
So you're thinking about having a way online to file a complaint?
Right.
Okay. Yeah. I don't know if we can keep up with it, but we could definitely, I mean, it's definitely worth a shot. Something to try. That's a great idea.
I mean, I'm just brainstorming. I'm just, I just know that, you know, we've done it in policing for quite a few years now. And I know every other department, whether it be sanitation, whether it be, you know, whatever, inspections, planning, zoning. This is not, this is not cutting-edge type of technology.
I think that's a great idea.
But we'll, we'll look at that.
Can I just make a comment? The, I've been dealing with animal control since 2004, off and on with the ebbs and flows, as county manager and now as elected official. You know, basically what we've done is try all kinds of gimmicks and move it here, move it there. It's never been paid properly or, the employees have never been paid competitively. It's always been under-resourced, except maybe when the sheriff had it for a while where they stick a bunch of people on it. And so I would like to fix it once and for all, you know, instead of keep doing this jockeying around and unrealistic kind of stuff, you know. So I would like, and maybe we can, we can talk it at a greater level of detail, peel the onion back from, from this, make this statement that I want to make. But I think it should be treated like a first responder, just like all of our other first responders. It should have that definition as a first responder. It should be resourced with equipment to do the job, just like other first responders are. It should be resourced with an adequate number of people to do the job, just like other first responders are. It should have all the communications and so forth that other first responders have. Because the situations they find themselves in are just like other first responders.
Yeah, you're dangerous. You're dealing with dangerous people and dangerous animals sometimes.
Sometimes we're the first ones in. If there's, honestly, even if there's a deceased person in the house, if there's an aggressive dog in there, we've gotta go in before anybody else.
Yeah. And so I don't want to, I don't want to be the one that figures out all the processes and the technology and everything. But I just want to, at least from a policy perspective, we resource it with people, equipment, and give it the respect it deserves for the difficulty of the job and the importance of the job, especially when it comes to animal cruelty and.
It's very, it's a very hard job. And I'm glad you said what you said because I was gonna get to touching on the on-call part of this. And I, and I don't want to, I'm not singling him out, but he made the statement in here the other day when Dany was here from the garage and we asked how on-call was going. And he said, good. Sometimes we don't go out at all. Sometimes we go out twice a week. It's fairly different. In their department, we call it on-call, but it's pretty much on-duty. Like they don't really get that same, they have to go out constantly. And we're getting paid the same exact thing as every other department's getting paid for on-call. That's just a, I don't know how that's.
Well, they're, I mean, they're making overtime, right? Or regular salary?
After they, they get, they earn comp time. And then after they get to that 75 hours, of course.
I can give them comp time if you can't give people off.
You don't, you don't get to take it off. Which is why they're gonna all stay 75 plus and be getting paid out for times, you know, that they're, they're overtime. But.
Because on, on-call, you only get for the entire week an extra $200, which averages out to be like a dollar or something an hour.
Yeah, the other thing about this has implications with like DSS and children around animals. And it's just got a lot of tentacles to it and everything. And so, and it's gonna be really expensive. I'm sorry.
It is. I mean.
If we're gonna fix this and do it right, like it's never been done since I've been here, started in 2004, it's gonna cost a lot of money. So just get ready.
And I appreciate that. I really do. Because we do have hard jobs and we, we work tirelessly. And, and we don't really get compensated for the work that we do. But, I mean, we do what we do because we, we believe in, in our mission. And, and I would love nothing more than to see this department just prosper and be ran in the professional manner that it should be.
Yeah. And we're gonna be transitioned to a new animal shelter. And so there's a lot of moving parts to this that need to be fixed once and for all, I think. And the, and so we need to, like I said, I sure don't want to be the one that figures out the details of how you do all this. But, but you guys need to come in and really well justify what you want us to do. Give us a good justification, then we can explain it to the public and everybody else. Because there's a massive number of animals in this county. I mean, it's just really almost crazy, all the issues that they have and the.
Well, and you can, I won't skip ahead too much for Lori so she can talk about it more. But you can look at the difference in the work level that's going on there. And by just looking at the outcomes for '21 and '22, '21, you know, Lori wasn't here for any of '21. She only came in July of 2022. And you can see the drastic differences in numbers of what was being euthanized before and what's getting out of there now. And that, I mean, and rescue work is hard work. Like it's a huge network of things you have to constantly on the phone at night, weekends. I was over there Sunday at 2 o'clock meeting a lady to get some cats out of there that were going to a rescue. And she was transporting her for us, but I had to get over there and get them out of there for her. There, there's just like, there's a whole team of people. If we didn't have Lisa Dunlap, who does the rescue coordination and manages our Facebook, I don't know what we would do. She's just amazing. But it's, you can, I mean, the outcome of it is well worth what we're doing because you can see it in the numbers. I mean, it's amazing.
Most of the public will support doing it properly if we justify and explain it to them.
Well, and we have that huge volunteer base now because they want to be a part of it because they want to be a part of saving things. They didn't quite get their minds around doing that before. So.
Now, I think to, you know, when, when you do the job properly and you respond to the public, you're gonna get busier. And I think that's a huge contribution of what's happened, is that the public, they're now seeing that we're going out, we're doing our jobs, you know, we're enforcing laws. And they see that. So we're getting more calls because they actually see us going out, doing the work. I did include in your packets, just kind of an outline. And I've only been able to track everything since I came in July. But I did, was able to go back and track the euthanasias in the prior year. So you can just clearly see the difference in how many lives we have saved versus euthanizing animals. Since I came on board, the only animals that we've had to euthanize were either rabid animals, very sick animals that the vet said nothing can be done for, or very, very severely aggressive animals. We've had some dogs come in that showed aggression. But with our team and our volunteers working with them, they've come around to make some of the best pets. I mean, we, we get so many follow-up stories now from people who adopted from us saying, this is like the best dog in the world. Like we're so thankful that, that he was able to come into our home. And that makes our jobs, that makes what we do worth it. So you can just kind of see in the numbers right here, the difference that, that we're making in the county. So going back to our departmental needs, and I know I'm, I'm throwing a lot at you guys, but I think this is just the opportunity to tell you where we're struggling and what our needs are.
That's why you're here.
Right. So something that we, we definitely need to look into is equipment. We don't have the proper equipment to do our jobs thoroughly. We have a lot of old equipment that sometimes doesn't even work anymore. I'll give you an example. I had a call the end of last year by one of my officers who was at a location in King. And EMS had already been there. A gentleman was severely attacked by his own dog, who was severely aggressive. Pretty much tore both of his arms off to pieces. And my officer arrived on scene and she called me and I was on another aggressive dog call on the other side of the county and was like, I'm not going in that house. I just can't. And I said, well, that's your job? You have to. And she was like, I, I'm not going in there. I'm sorry. You can fire me, but I'm not going in. So I left, I left where I was and came to that call and got in the house. It looked like a massacre. I'll just say it. It looked like a massacre had gone on in there. And I was able to get the dog contained back into the bedroom with, just kind of trying to back him up towards the wall, towards the bed. And he lifted me off the ground with a catch ball. That's how strong and mad he was. The dog was so aggressive that I, I got him cornered up onto the bed, but I had no way to, to stop him pretty much. So I had to call agency assist from Forsyth County. They came over. Two of their officers came over, their chief came over and one of their animal control officers. And they had like state-of-the-art dart guns with CO2 cartridges. And they were able to dart the dog. His adrenaline was so high that it actually took two. We had to dart him twice. And he still struggled going down. And so this dog was deemed aggressive in Forsyth County the year prior because he had attacked the guy's wife, her shoulder, her neck, pretty bad bites. And then it turned on the daughter, who was, I think, 13 at the time. And she ended up having mini skin grafts to her face because of this dog. And then it turned on him, of course. He moved to Stokes County back in June of the prior year. And, and that's kind of what happened. It took a lot to talk this man into letting me euthanize that dog, even after all of his severe injuries. But I pretty much said, well, this is how he's gonna have to live for the rest of his life in a 10-by-10 kennel with a concrete floor and a top to the kennel. And it's gotta be padlocked all the time. And if he's ever brought outside to go to the vet, he's gonna have to be muzzled. Is that the life that you want for your dog? And he finally said, okay, just do it. And we didn't hesitate because I told him, I said, when this dog wakes up, and I was tapping his eyes and he was, he was coming away because we got into the shelter while he was under. I said, if he, if he kills one of my staff, we're gonna be in a different book. This dog is severely aggressive and it's time. So we deal with calls like that. And we didn't have the equipment to contain the dog. I mean, he was very severely aggressive. And so one thing that I've put in your packets is dart guns with CO2 cartridges.
Do you not have any at all?
We have some very old ones that they just.
Columbus brought over?
They're pretty bright. Yeah. Yeah. And, and we don't even have cartridges for them anymore. I'm not even sure they still make them.
We don't make cartridges for them.
Yeah. So things like that, when we have.
Bought those a long time ago. I remember.
Severely aggressive animals that we have to deal with. You know, sometimes they, they do have to be darted. Just a few smaller things like crushed gravel around the back. When you come out of our, the back of our building, there's like a metal garage carport thing with a door and there's constantly standing water back there. And we usually try to walk the dogs out of the back to keep them from accessing the public in the front. So it's just a constant pool of water. So we definitely need like some rock dust or something back there to fill in the holes, just so we don't have to walk through it and the animals don't have to walk through it. We do need.
I mean, that should be a simple fix.
Yep.
We've asked it before we put rock dust. I've been asking for some regrading a little bit because even if you put rock dust.
It needs to slope off.
The way you have to open the back door area, it needs to slope off a little bit because it's still good. It, that, the carport enclosed area floods terribly. You have to have everything off the ground back there because it just runs like a river through there. That's a separate issue that I don't know how you fix that with.
And that's the only place we have the story.
Well, if we're getting a new facility, we just need to put Band-Aids.
Just what, we've done a lot of that.
There's been Band-Aids for about the past, well, since the 80s.
I realize that.
Yeah. Yeah. We just, just some things like that, that sloping area and putting some gravel back there. And I've talked to Stuart about that, is needed just to, for the temporary fix of, you come out of there with a 100-pound dog pull and you hit that muddy pool of water area, takes you for a ride sometimes.
A couple of us have been taken down back there by large dogs. We do need a few signs, like we need a new sign for the front door that posts our hours to the public. We need a sign to the side of the building to say staff only because when we put the dogs in the outside. because when we put the dogs in the outside runs for, you know, like yesterday, it was super nice outside, days like that, the, the public is constantly going around there because they can hear the dogs bark and they can see them when they pull up, um, so I'd like to take what fencing we have left over from the play yard and just bring it out about 12 feet, post it with a sign, you know, "Staff members only allowed in this area." Um, something else as far as equipment goes, we, we definitely need some new catch poles, um, Adam had a situation last week where he had a catch pole on a dog, um, an aggressive dog, we don't use them unless it's something that's gonna take our face off, but, um, uh, the catch pole was kinda rusted and wouldn't release properly, um, I've had that same issue with some of our equipment.
How much, how much does that cost, the catch?
I mean, you can get a catch pole, they start around $69, I think, up to over a hundred or something.
To me, that should be pretty quick.
Well, we, we just, she's just listing everything because, I mean, as you know, that budget for animal control is blown out of the water.
Yes, it is.
Because it was done by a previous chief officer and there was not enough funding in there to cover anything we've done thus far, so the budget is, until we're gonna do one large budget amendment soon to rectify a lot of that situation, but, so she's just completely out of money everywhere because of all the things that she's had to do already, so she just wants to...
Yeah, well then, I think, then, I, I think we just need to see her, uh, overview of what your recommendation is, but here's the, it's like anything else, uh, the longer you overlook simple stuff like 60-some bucks when you're dealing with an aggressive animal or something, and then one of our, either a citizen gets hurt or one of our staff members get hurt, and so then we're dealing with a lot more issues and a lot more money with workman comp, workman comp's claim or lawsuit than anything else, so, uh, I, I haven't, I haven't looked at, you know, if you keep any type of revenue stream to the side in the, in the, in the administration office budget, but I'm sure that, uh, if I start looking, I'll find some money in some other departments and we'll do a budget amendment and, and get that done, but I shouldn't have to do that.
Yeah, double, double check, I, when I looked at the sheet that, um, Lisa gave us the reconciliation report thing for six years, it says 85% still remaining.
That's because that $1.3 million is in the budget for the shelter.
Oh, okay.
They put it in that budget, I, I said, "Why is that, I, I know it's way under the 50% mark, li- logistically."
Okay.
It's because that $1.3 million is pushing that number up, that's the only reason it's at that percent.
So it's not a realistic number then?
Yeah, and like the, the dart guns...
Take that out, now show us what it is sometime.
Like the dart guns, you know, they, if we purchase through capture, which is...
How much is that?
They start around 500 and go up to, I don't know, 1,500 or so, um, just depends on which ones you actually purchase and how many cartridges you get, but they do come out and they train the entire staff of officers on how to use them properly and everything else, so, um, the, the lady, uh, was supposed to send me last week a, a quote on exactly what Forsyth County is using and how much that equipment is, um, she hasn't sent it, I emailed her again yesterday, um...
They top in in the middle or blow in down there, probably middle or upper, right?
Yeah, yeah, somewhere in there, so I've, I've actually, um, got her pulling everything that they ordered, um, 'cause I think that would probably suit us, we won't need as many, of course, 'cause we don't have that many officers, but I think if we at least had two dart guns, one to keep in one vehicle and then one to keep at the shelter, it would, it would be tremendously helpful, um, just for situations like that, um...
One in each truck, you said, one in each officer?
I mean, I don't necessarily think we have to have one in each truck, it would be nice to, but if, if we can only afford two, keeping one at the shelter and, and one, in one of the vehicles, I think would be great, because at least that way, if we got a dispatch call on a severely aggressive animal, we could grab the one at the shelter and head to the call.
Yeah, but the problem is that a lot can happen while you're heading to the call, I put them in all, I put them all...
That's why you don't have people. Because I sure don't.
Um, and like, for instance, uniforms, I'm, I'm over budget on uniforms and I'm, I'm desperately in need of officers, um, the last officer I hired put me over budget on uniforms and he only has two pair of pants and three shirts. They were, they were out of his size, um, which is why he only got those, but just with that, we're over budget by quite a bit, so...
Yeah, let's just, I mean, just take a look, Shannon, real closely.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have been, I've been...
Look at our county budget, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know if you put any money way back in the administrative area, most city managers, county managers, they put a little minute, little bit of money over in the administrative area, but it's, if you know, they look, they look in the ci, they look in the county budget and then that's...
We, we will, and I mean, I, like I said, I just wanted her to give you a complete overview because even though it's just 500 here or 69 there, it totals up to a pretty large number when you start doing all these different increases and I don't really wanna do that without you knowing why we're doing it.
It's dark, and I just googles $1,800.
Um, another part of the uniforms is, um, the armor vest, so the officers that were there before me were larger, so the armor vests that I have, one, it's outdated and two, it completely falls over me, so we don't really have any right now, Adam is still using his that he used at the sheriff's office, um, but, so we desperately need armor vests to protect us, because, I mean, we, we pretty much deal with the same people the sheriff's office deals with, um, on a regular basis, um, and sometimes people can get a little more violent over their animals than, than their kids or family members, you know, it just, it just happens, um, so that's something I think that, that we definitely need. The other thing that I'd like to look into is, you know, county, um, firearms from, from the county, um, right now, we just carry our own personal firearms, um, if we have a concealed carry and have been trained, um, my, my newer officer hasn't been trained in firearms, so he doesn't carry, um, but we need like 22s, I would say, for the, for the trucks, um, in case, like, we've had situations where sheep have been attacked severely bad and they're so injured that, you know, they were suffering and we would have to put them down out in the field, or a dog that's been ran over that's severely injured that can't be saved, that we have to put down out in the field, um, so, you know, we just, that's something that we need to, to really look into is, is training through the county and also county, um, administered firearms, so...
Yeah, I think that, you know, if you're carrying your own firearms and stuff, I think on duty and if you have to use it, I think it, it's off the top of my head, I can see some issues, but we, but you just need to do some things before that would be allowed, I mean, but obviously, I mean, you're, just, we still gotta do things the right way, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would like to see that firearm stuff grounded in sound policy, with the sheriff being involved or not being if he has to, or whatever the, whatever the proper policy is, and then make sure the training happens and it, I don't like the idea of personal weapons either, and might fix all that so that when, when that unfortunate situation does happen, that, that they'll look back and see we did everything the way we were supposed to. That's a particularly sensitive area.
I thought we had discussed this before with the previous, um, chief animal control officer, and didn't the county attorney have some reserves about having county-issued firearms?
Well, kinda like what, what Commissioner Morse is saying, there wasn't really defined policy on it, it never has been, they've always just kind of carried or not carried, and they carried it to the sheriff's office.
There weren't sworn officers, right?
And, but, but Ty, I spoke with Ty before, um, when Lori came on board and he okayed it for them to do it under the concealed carry policy as long as they are trained to do that, because she didn't feel comfortable being in the field without anything to protect herself, but there needs to be something, and I'd never been able to get a concrete answer from anybody on either side of that who has worked here, was working here for or passed on what the policy was for them for their firearms, because it's just always been kinda, everybody just kinda, whatever, over there.
Well, it's typically under the sheriff's department, so they're already sworn officers.
Most of the time, it's always under the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
We have a kind of a unique situation.
There'd be an armor somewhere, right, to armor, armor, why? I guess you, don't you, don't keep anything on site, you'd have to have an armor, wouldn't you?
Well, I thought that...
Or that, is everything just go home?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They don't have to have an armor to like fix stuff, check out the weapons?
That's what I would think, I mean, that's...
Okay.
I mean, if we decide to...
Or they have armors on movie sets, so...
If, I mean, if we decide, we, you know, we want to do county-issued firearms, we can always train through Pro Shots, you know, stuff like that, if the sheriff's office doesn't wanna do it, we can always go to like Pro Shots or somewhere and do the training there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have different, several different options, um, when it comes to that, um, just a few other things, like as far as equipment, our animal traps that we have are old, they are, a lot of them are rusted, um, some of them just don't even work anymore, you can WD-40 them until they, they just don't work, and we're, we're at that point with a lot of our, our traps, um, where they're just not really operable.
Have a lot deployed all the time, animal traps all the time.
We set traps a lot, we do, especially for like dogs that are being a nuisance in neighborhoods, but you can't get close enough to even get it, get them, um, and then cats, we, we have a, an extremely severe overpopulation with feral cats in this county, um, there's a number of the mobile home parks you can pull into and you'll see 100 to 200 cats just, and we're getting complaints on a daily basis about feral cat colonies. Stokes County, they, we don't have the resources like Forsyth County or Guilford, they have, um, like feral cat rescues where they come out and they trap and they spay neuter and then they release, um...
Given to farmers, right, sometimes and stuff.
Yeah, sometimes, you know, they can go back as barn cats to locations, but there's just such an overpopulation problem in this county that we can't get a grasp on it, I mean, even if we went and, and captured 25 every day and euthanized them, there's still gonna be an overpopulation problem in the county, and that's a big complaint that we get, is, is feral cats, um, because people get them and then, you know, they'll, they'll get cats and then they'll move into a mobile home park, for instance, and then they don't spay neuter, and within a year, I mean, you're looking at tons and tons and tons of cats, and then it just, it just keeps that, that circle going where...
How can we change it?
Producing. I mean, the only way to do anything about it is either find a rescue groups that can come in and, and trap them and spay neuter them and release them somewhere else, or to capture them, unfortunately trap them and euthanize them, which is gonna make our euthanasia numbers go through the roof, but, I mean, if that's what we have to do, that's what we'll have to do, but, um, we don't even have the resources.
Well, I don't think the animals are the problem, I think the humans are the problem because they're not responsible and we should make them pay.
Oh, yeah, there needs to be much stricter, that's a, a big level of stricter laws on spaying and neutering.
This is not gonna be cheap.
No, it's not, and...
It didn't start yesterday, I'm set, I'll be set on want two in August, and this has been a problem, except I remember Rick dealing with it when he was county manager, and he's the only one that even threw something at it, I mean, it's just turned the other way.
That's a serious issue, and then just backyard breeding, um, people who are breeding without a kennel permit, um, we've got to crack down on some of this overpopulation problems in our county, and I think one way of doing that is, um, and I'm, I'm gonna present you guys soon with a new, um, some, some changes and revisions to the current ordinance, um, as far as fines for people who are operating without a kennel permit, um, we've got to crack down on that, they're just adding to the overpopulation problem, um, and it's just honestly, it's to a point where it's out of control in the county.
And you put together a task force that will help you put together?
Yes, sir, um, that's something I'm also working on, um, one is doing a cruelty task force where we have, um, I have extensive training in animal cruelty investigations, and then I'd like to work with, maybe have one more officer on board, have a judge on board, a district attorney on board, a forensic veterinarian on board, where we can combat the cruelty issues and then have some type of, of plan for the, the feral colonies.
There's some, I mean, Space Stokes works really hard, but they have limited resources, I mean, they only get $5,000 for the year as far as in the budget through animal control, and they, she spends all of it on going out to people who are willing to help her do it, if they call her about some feral cats, she goes out and helps trap them, sets up the spay neuter appointments, does the vouchers for them for low cost or free spay neuter sometimes in that situation, so she's doing all she can do with the resources that she has, but that's the only funding, some is out of her own pocket usually.
Yeah, it does, and, um, and one thing that we have against us in the county is we do not have one animal rescue organization in the entire county, um, I mean, Surrey has several, Forsyth has a ton, um, we just, we don't have those resources in this county.
We have the Friends of Stokes, but they're, they only are taking, you know, just a limited number of things.
Yeah, they'll pull from the shelter, but there's actually no rescue groups that are going out and taking in like litters and everything else, um, and like a lot of other counties do, um, but I think if, if we can just get a grasp on the breeding in the county, um, maybe up our fees for kennel licenses, um, and incorporate some fines for people who are doing it illegally, um...
Well, and increase those fines and, and don't give them so many chances, like charge them the fine from the start, don't keep going out there over and over again and then give them a fine every...
Currently, our citations are like $100, like a first warning, second one is $100, third one is $200, and then $300, and then it's like 500 and 600, and, and I will tell you from experience on going out on these calls, if somebody does not come into compliance after the second time you're there, they're not gonna do it, they're just not, they're either defiant or they don't have the money, or they just don't care, so I think we need to combat that problem with going from, we'll do a written warning, and then the second time we go out, you get a much higher fine, the third time we go out, you get a much higher fine, or your animal gets seized, um, because we, we've gotta make people be accountable, and I think that's one issue that we've had in this county is there's, there's just not been much accountability in the past.
Zero.
Yeah, so I think that's something that, that desperately needs to change, um, so I'm, I've added some things to the, the, um, ordinance and made just a few changes that I've submitted to the Animal Control Advisory Board to look at, that they'll bring to you guys, um, but I think, I think it'll at least help, it's a good start on...
There, there are some counties around us that have put money in, like larger than $5,000, they put $30,000 into an account at one time for spay and neuter the feral cat populations to try and help combat that, because the more funding you have, the more you can do, and the more you can spay and neuter, the more you can hopefully stop the, stop it from happening, and where it's at at least.
And we are applying for some grants, just so you know, we're applying for some spay neuter grants, um, Space Stokes, they've done such an amazing, made such an amazing difference in this county, um, so anytime somebody comes to the, to the shelter now to surrender, say, a litter of kittens or a litter of puppies, they get a free voucher to have the mother spayed, that's part of the stipulation, you're gonna dump all the puppies or kittens on us, the mama's gonna get spayed so this doesn't happen again, so that's something that we've incorporated to try to, to cut down on the overpopulation problem as well.
And she follows up to be sure they keep their appointment.
Yeah, yeah, we make sure, we make sure they're, they're showing up.
Back to the armor vest, just a quick question, if you get, when you get those, you're gonna get the latest ones that have the load-bearing equipment on the vest and stuff?
Yes, sir.
And are that, and don't they have grants out for those too, the sheriff gets grants?
I think that, yeah, I think the sheriff's department does get some grants, so we're...
I don't know if y'all can or not, but they're pretty expensive, aren't they?
They are, yeah, they are, um, the sheriff's office just got the new Safari Land vests, which are much better, um, on your, your posture and your body in general, 'cause the stuff's heavy, um, that we, we lug around every day, um, yeah, so I'm checking into grants for that, also, um, I'm gonna apply for a grant for an emergency response trailer, so if we do have an emergency response, whether it's a, you know, a hurricane or a fire, um, flood at the shelter, anything like that, um, they're making some, um, amazing trailers and all now that will house, some of them will house up to 43 animals, which would cover our entire shelter, um, so through FEMA, there is a grant that I think we may be able to get a really nice trailer, like about a $74,000 trailer, at no cost to the county, if we can get this grant to go through.
Be good.
So that's something that we're, we're working on, we can also use that if the shelter gets flooded, you know, to have it to get the animals out to a different location, but also if we have a hoarding bust, which we've had several in this county, where you may get 80 animals out of one house, um, we would have a way, because right now, we pretty much rely on Surrey County, I mean, Surrey County has been so good to us as far as, um, like the sheep call a few months ago, they came out with their livestock trailer, we don't have a livestock trailer to move animals, um, they came out and they didn't even charge us, um, you know, it was just like a agency assist and helping a neighbor out, um, and then they have a camet trailer, which we used when we did the cat hoarding bust, um, we set up at Francisco, Francisco Elementary School, and that, that camet trailer is full of cages and bowls and litter boxes and food and... of cages and bowls and litter boxes and food and fans and plastic rolls and everything that you need in, in the case of an emergency. So a trailer like this would relieve us from, from things like that.
Sounds good, see what, see what you can do.
So we're working on, I don't want you to think I'm just here begging for money. We're working on grants too, to try to, try to get help, to cut, cut the expenses back. Something else that we would love to be able to do is access our own website through the, the county website, so that we could post all the animals that we have up for adoption and stray holds, because right now.
I think we're working on that.
Okay, yeah, right now.
Countywide we are, yeah.
Okay, yeah, right now, we just post on Facebook and a lot of people don't have access to Facebook. So that would help the outreach in the community. The other thing I just wanted to, to bring up was our vehicles. A lot of our vehicles are, you know, getting a lot of miles on them and, but something that bothers me, just as somebody with past cruelty investigation experience, is the metal dog boxes. They can be very inhumane. When you pick up an animal that is injured, maybe that's been hit by a car or attacked by coyotes or other animals, it just feels so inhumane to put them in a dog box, a metal dog box, and transport them like to the emergency clinic. So going, going back to on-call, I'll give, I'll just give you kind of like a little brief history of just one week of my on-call. You go on-call on Monday morning at eight-thirty. So you work all day. I worked all day, I got off work about six, I think I clocked out about six o'clock. By six-thirty, I had a dispatch. And then by like eight-thirty, I had another dispatch. And one of those was a dog that had been hit by a car, who had kind of gone, gone off into a, kind of a ravine. And she was in a tremendous amount of pain. And I get there and I couldn't even get her in the dog box. She was in, in bad shape. So I put her on a stretcher, got blankets, got her in the floorboard of my vehicle and rushed her to the emergency clinic. I was there till late and ended up that her, her back was broken. I had, I called ahead to the emergency clinic and told them, you know, who I was with, what was happening, and I said, I need somebody in the parking lot with an injection of pain meds the second I arrived. The dog screamed the whole way there and it was horrible. But our vehicles are just not set up for animals that might be injured like that. So I would love to, whenever we do get to the point of acquiring new vehicles, I would like to look at something a little more humane. I don't know if we could go with SUVs maybe, where we could have a divider in the back, but still an easy way to sanitize, that's climate controlled. You know, we have fans in our dog boxes, but when it's ninety-five degrees and you're on a metal floor in a metal box, it's like being in an oven, even if you have hot air being distributed through, through the back. And then in the winter, it's extremely cold in those dog boxes.
Notice the dumb question, but, I mean, do you have a schedule for?
Yeah, and I've already been looking at their vehicles. I talked to Lori about that yesterday. We've, there's a couple of them that are due to come off this year that were ones that we owned with mileage as far as from the model from Enterprise. And then the, the leased one, you know, we could do an early trade-in if we wanted to on the vehicle that Lori drives. I've been talking though about SUVs that other counties use for animal control, what they think would be the best option. We need something that's four-wheel drive because they go places that are muddy and they can't get out of. So we're looking into that with Enterprise as far as getting an option, just which one could be the best outfitted, trying to find one that's not so big off the ground, so as if like Lori's out there loading a big dog into a, you want it to be like a little bit lower, you can get the dog in there easier. So we're looking at that already for, for trading.
What's on my mind, since you're, you're tying that in, I think that, because, is this the end of the first year or second year that you've had the lease vehicle program for the county really?
End of the, we've been.
No, it's been more than that.
It's been, no, it's been longer than that. It's, gosh, but this is like going into the fourth year of that.
Fourth, yeah, the fifth year, they're supposed to rotate them, I think, in the fifth year, right?
And on the miles too.
Have you, I mean, so, have you all hit a study or have you, you know, you know, looked at the pros and cons of it?
Oh, yeah, Glenda has all that data.
I'm not deciding either way, I'm just.
Leasing, you mean, leasing versus buying?
Right.
I haven't done that personally, but.
Yeah, but we have a ton of data on that that Glenda and I can show you at, at any time as far as from Enterprise and how much we've reduced our fleet down, where it was, we were, had too many vehicles at one time that were being underutilized or not used at all. And so, yeah, we've got a, a lot of numbers on that that we can.
It needs to be, especially if you're getting ready to, you know, be rotating people out in that fifth year, I think we need to have, you know.
A better budget, yeah, we need a really good update.
Right, right, because you don't wanna get, you just don't, you don't wanna, I'm not saying we would do it, but we just don't wanna do something because it'd be easy because it's our, you just kind of do it. We gotta make sure it's, it's for the best for our staff, it's best for the citizens.
And we did utilize a van from, was being used, I think, at one time by DSS and it got phased out from them and I was out in the garage and I asked, I think I just asked them to use it for a trip one day that I was using to transport some animals on, you know, a timeframe. And we ended up being able to transfer that to them because it's nice to have for transporting animals to the vet. But that's just on, it's not for four-wheel drive or not for, you know, an officer to drive. But it is nice to have something of that size there to be able to, to utilize with the dog crates and things in it. But, yeah, we're, we're looking.
And, and again, you, you brought up another thing that, so what I'm used to is, is, you know, in a, effective fleet maintenance, county-wide fleet maintenance, we need to make sure that we know upfront how many authorized vehicles that we carry from year to year. If, like what you're saying, is you wanna increase your fleet, that has to be a separate itemized situation, in other words, kind of like what you just explained. In other words, we're taking this vehicle kind of offline because it's got this, this and this to do this, but we still gotta make sure the costs are effective. So in other words, if you're still gonna have to, you know, do things to the engine or if it's not totally safe or it's, there's, there's a lot of play. We just can't say, well, we're gonna put it offline and now I'm gonna carry it. Can't do that.
There's a whole problem. Glenda can get, Glenda knows this in and out, she could explain that. There is, what you're talking about's all in place. They do.
In writing?
Yes, with Enterprise.
Five-year warranties on it.
Yeah, with Enterprise. I mean, they have a whole model they set up for us for how, when they're gonna transfer, how they track it, how they check it. I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's a pretty nice model they set up for us.
If you would, get me a list of how many authorized vehicles in my department.
Yeah, I think Glenda's already working on that because somebody else asked for it.
Already asked for it.
Yeah, she was already getting it.
So as far as like the animal control positions, you know, I have one that's open right now that I'm desperately looking to hire for. And I have a vehicle for that position. It's been in the shop for about two months with transmission issues, but we, we do have that vehicle already allocated for that position. So if, if we could get two more animal control officers put into our budget, we would need vehicles, you know, for them.
Yeah, we just weigh out, do we, you know, buy new through the lease, or not buy, but through the lease, or, I mean, it's just, there's just, I just wanna make sure, and I'm not saying, and I'm sure that he does a great job, but I'd like to see the list and I'd like to see the, the data that, I just wanna make sure that one person isn't making a decision, I'm gonna keep this vehicle over here. Because it, it is, it is included in the cost, whether you actually put it in a paper or not, but it's, there's a cost.
Got questions?
Go ahead.
Since we don't have much time left. Can you, Lori, can you tell us again, like, the rationale for, I guess, taking back the positions from the sheriff's department, but you don't have sworn officers, right?
Correct. I do have, Adam Teague, he could work as a sworn officer if the sheriff's office allowed him to do so. I mean, he still has his credentials and everything. It's just that he's not working as a sworn officer at the shelter because he's, he's, that would be through the sheriff.
Not under the sheriff's office anymore.
Since it's not under.
I'm not carrying a certification.
But is there some, I mean, I know there was a reason that that went to the sheriff's department, so that you did have sworn officers who can actually.
Arrest and charge the felonies.
Yeah, so I just don't, I don't know, I don't guess, I don't, so what happened, so those two positions are in the sheriff's department, but they're not being utilized as, so it just gave him two bonus officers? I don't know, I don't understand how that works. Like.
The sheriff transfers them back over to road officers or wherever.
I think one went to be a detective and, yeah.
Well, so how, I mean, how does that, I mean, how did, I mean, if, I'm guessing the agreement would remain under Sheriff Marshall, I guess the original agreement. So, but, so how does the, I mean, how does that happen to where?
Sheriff's office doesn't do it anymore. So they gave it, they don't, they.
We, we did get our truck back, which is, is what the, the open position will have, but, but that's all we really acquired back.
Just don't make sense to me that these two positions stay with the sheriff's department. And she's taken back all this workload, but she didn't get any positions. You know, I mean, there's something just don't add up with that whole scenario.
Maybe, maybe the manager can have a conversation with sheriff and find out what's going on. Ronnie, Ronnie, go ahead. Yes. That thing loud enough.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I'm a good boy and I'll sit here and listen, but I don't worry, nothing. So I'm only have about five minutes, Lori, can someone have some of the things that she was talking about?
Yeah, no problem, go right ahead.
I came on board in two thousand sixteen. It was just seven years for me. And when I came on board in two thousand sixteen, the most complaints and calls I got in my first six months was on animal control. Animal control kept me busy at my house, getting calls and complaints from people in the community. And so Rick can verify this, to make, we slowly tried to move and improve the situation and it didn't get better really until Sheriff Marshall, we helped Sheriff Marshall in and we had a meeting with him. And we asked him if he could take over the enforcement part of animal control tool. And he agreed to do that until it could improve. And then eventually he wanted to give it back up, but he said, yes, I'll, I'll be glad to give two or three of my officers to animal control, to the enforcement part. And things sort of got better. And then as we moved along, I'll just be upfront and say that as we got near the end of Sheriff Marshall's tenure, Sheriff Lemon, one of his first requests that came to the board was he wanted to give, he wanted his officers taken back off of animal control. He said he needed those officers on the road. And the board approved moving them out of animal control back to the sheriff's department, which immediately, of course, created staffing issues again with animal control. We have had staffing issues with animal control ever since I've been on this board in two thousand sixteen. And we have never, ever, I mean, I have donated money, personal, my personal money, I have donated money to the Stokes-France Hill Shelter that built on Goshen Road. I've gone to some other meetings. I've gone, Shannon can, Shannon can verify this, I've gone to our own animal control building at the landfill two or three times to see the situation it was in. And since Lori has come in, things have improved drastically. And, but I'm gonna tell you, I wrote down five things that she's mentioned, and we gotta make a decision as a board. It's come to that point because after seven years of hearing complaints, then things getting better. It's sort of like Rick used the word "haves" and "flubs." And that's sort of what it's been. It was really bad when I come on, got better when we got some enforcement from Mike Marshall. Then when Lori requested that, hey, get his officers back, then Lori, Shannon was able to get Lori to come in. But I've heard five things that are very important to me. New building space, new building to create more space, equipment, we're so far behind on equipment, sounds like we're in the dark ages. Staff, staffing issues, that's big in every department, but especially this one. And because what we're having is it's gonna create burnout. We're hours gonna be down. When you're working all the time almost, that you gonna burn out and you gonna lose good people. And the last thing, of course, she mentioned was vehicles. Now, we gotta make a decision as boards. Commissioner Morris knows this, he's been with me throughout this thing just about. We, he, he made a statement early in this conversation, that if we really wanted to do this, it was, it was gonna cost. I mean, you can't just magically make a department go from having struggles due to all the things that Lori has lifted to make it go away without spending some money. So I think when the budget time rolls around this time, we're gonna have to sit down as a group of five and make decisions on what we want to give to the animal control. Because if we don't, I'll tell you what's gonna happen. If we don't really seriously look at this, I, I won't be on the board five, six years from now, but I can tell you that the boards ahead will continue to have to deal with this if, if, if we don't tackle it. I can give you my example, like what school system's in right now. They're dealing with under-capacity schools and that having to deal with. We've got, we've got to deal with this animal control if we wanna fix it. Now, if we, if we wanna lay it like it is and put our staffing in issue, in situations that are, I would say, that could compromise them, they could get injured or hurt or whatever and, and, you know, our building space is totally inadequate over there. We just gotta make a decision. And I know it's only the end of January, but we get ready ahead in the February. When you start heading into February in the county, that's when you got to really start looking at the budget. End of February, first of March is when we start really cracking down on the budget. We're gonna have to make some decisions on this one. Up to me, I'm gonna tell you, when I had this thing running in two thousand sixteen, I was getting calls every week about animals running wild, everywhere. That's when I brought it up to Rick and, and then all of our other commissioners, and that's when we brought Mike Marshall in and said, hey, you should help us out. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things around history in this. I think Rick will agree. And when he said "haves" and "flubs," he knows what, we've had some things improved and some things that went down. So I'm just saying to all our commissioners, I know the history on this. We've got to make a decision. Do we want to do that and try to improve this and be cost-effective now? I'm not just saying go out and spend money just right and left, but things that are vitally important to this department, we need to make some decisions on, are we gonna help them out or not? Thank you, Commissioner.
Hey, thanks, Ronnie. One, one thing that kind of triggered me from what he was saying is, I like to do stuff during a regular, regular budget cycle, but some of this we may need to do, some of the purchases stuff need to do before that, by the current budget, I'm sure, but some of this, we may need to have a discussion item on the, on one of our regular meeting agendas about some of this stuff before the budget. I'll agree with that. I'll agree with that.
So too.
Yeah, I think it's a safety issue.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. As soon as y'all are ready to put it on the agenda and discuss the, the critical parts of this, maybe the time sensitive parts of this, before we get into the form, and then we'll finish it in the budget cycle.
I just hope it's not an availability problem, the, the supply chain.
Probably will be on some things, maybe.
Yeah, most of the equipment I've already called to make sure we're, we would be able to get it if we could. And I, I think most everything's available.
I don't think, in the essence of time, I don't think that it's going to allow us to go further with this, um, tethering ban thing, but I think at some point we do need to talk about that with you. Um, I think right now it sounds like if we put that in place, it's just going to create, uh, even more workload for y'all when you're already strained with your resources. But at some point, we do need to look at that policy and look at your recommendation and your board's recommendation. Cause I think we've looked at it and talked about it and, um, talked about how a total tethering ban might not work for our area. Things that work in Chapel Hill and other places just may not work in a rural area like Stokes County. But, you know, I know you have some thoughts on what would work and what we could do, so.
Yeah, that's going to be part of that discussion agenda item.
Yeah, just to, to briefly hit on that, um, and I, I did put a little bit in my notes regarding the tethering issues. A, a lot of the neglect, um, that we get are tethered animals in this county. The majority of the neglect cases we get are, are tethered. And I think what I really want the board to understand is that it can't be gray in our, in our ordinance. It, it either needs to be black or white and it needs to be enforceable. The issue that we have with what we have right now is it's not really enforceable. We need, what I would love to see in this county is just, uh, um, no unattended tethering. If you're on a camping trip, it's fine to tie your dog out with you, you know, as long as it has access to shelter, food and water. I think if you are going to go out and do yard work, you can have your dog on a trolley line to be out there with you, running back and forth. It's just the, the 24 hour a day consistent tethering, one, it's inhumane, it makes dogs aggressive. Females constantly get impregnated when they're tethered, um, and, and they just get very dominant. I've seen situations where a kid's ball rolls into the neighbor's yard and it gets inside of what I call a crop circle where that dog's tethered. Dog attacks the child because that's his territory. That's all he knows. That's all he has to, to pretty much protect. And, and animals get in a mindset. It's kind of like locking a human in a closet. You will go stir crazy when you are stuck in one spot 24 hours a day for your entire life. It isn't inhumane practice, so, but, but I do want you guys to understand that it needs to be enforceable. We can't have, it's okay to tether your dog for four hours a day. We can't enforce that. Cause I don't have the resources to send officers out to see how long your dog's been tethered. I think we need, either need an all out ban or a no unattended tethering ordinance. Um, and as far as the workload, I think the way to combat that is, um, have a 15 month phase in period. That's what we did in Forsyth County. Um, we, we put it out there that in 15 months, animals can no longer be tethered and th- these are your options. You can house train your dog. You can put up a fenced in yard. You can put up a dog lot that has, you know, adequate square footage for the size dog that you have. There's, there's a lot of different options that people can look into, but if you give them a 15 month phase in period, then you're not going to have all the excuses at the end of 15 months, well, you know, I didn't know, or, well, you know, I, I can't put up a dog lot. I can't go buy a dog lot that fast. Give them a phase in period so there's not all the excuses and they have plenty of time. We can advertise that. We can, um, see if Duke Energy would allow us to put, uh, a, some type of, of document in with the, the power bills. Cause even if you rent, you have a power bill. And that's a good way to reach the majority of the population. But I think, I think it's time that we, we join other counties in, in realizing how inhumane tethering is. I've actually put together a very short slideshow of dogs that I have personally been involved in the rescue with in Stokes County, um, just to show you how a lot of the animals are living in backyards throughout, um, Stokes and just the, the inhumane conditions that they're living in, not only mentally, but, but physically. The ailments that they, they have due to being tethered. So that, um, I think having a.
Of course, I just do that with exceptions, with logical, common sense exceptions, like camping and things like that.
Yeah, if you're hunting or you're, um, camping or you're doing some type of field trials with your dogs or livestock work, I think that's, we can have exceptions. And that's what Forsyth County Incorporated, they have exceptions, but there's also no unattended tethering. So, and with those exceptions, they can't be on like, have chains around their necks, you know?
Yeah.
We can have stipulations in there, but they can be, what, what are enforceable. We just, we can't change it to something that we can't enforce. That, that's just.
And I'm hoping to get, I'm hoping to get tired of that draft of the amendments and the ordinance. We've got some other stuff in there. There's just logistical things that need to be changed and that to look at. So maybe we can even have it at your next meeting for you to look at and see. I know, now we got to get, it's 10:40. We've got to get.
That's true. And like I took out things like the dog license that we don't, not even in effect anymore. Things like that that need to be removed, so.
I have two quick questions too, real quick answers. How do we pay for the emergency vet clinic when we have to use it?
How do we pay for it?
Do we have a budget line for going to emergency vet costs?
It's in our contractual services.
Or what?
The contractual services.
Oh, okay.
But it, it is expensive.
Do they charge us the same high rates they do everybody else?
No, they, they do give us a little bit of a discount, but, I mean, you know, when you walk through those doors, it's going to be expensive, but they, they do give us a, a little bit of a discount.
Okay. My other question is, do you have any issues with reptiles or exotic animals being kept in the county? Okay, when, let's talk about that.
I had a case just a couple of weeks ago, um, with a lot of reptiles. They weren't necessarily exotics, maybe a couple, but, um, but, oh yeah, we had a pretty, pretty bad case.
If we need to do anything with that. We've had some big issues with that before, so.
And, and a lot of people just don't know the law and they don't take the time to understand the law. When it comes like to turtles, you're not supposed to have more than five. Um, they can only be certain types and, you know, this guy was way over his limit, but, um, but I called, actually called Wildlife In, Wildlife Enforcement in on that with me and we, we processed the scene together, um, and he's been charged, so.
Okay. You guys have any other questions? Ronnie, you got any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay, Sonya, I guess don't say she's not here. Okay, I think that very good presentation.
I sincerely appreciate your support because it, it is a hard job and, um, and the shelter is so outdated and there's a lot of health hazards. And I would invite any of you that would like to come over and just kind of take a tour and walk through and see what we do every day. I would be happy to schedule a time to bring you over and, and walk through the shelter with you and just kind of show you a little bit about what we do every day.
Sounds good.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Hey, thanks, Lori. Appreciate it. Five minute break. We'll get to that. Okay, I'll call our meeting back to order from, uh, short recess. Recession to the recess meeting. And next on our agenda are the fire marshal, and I think you guys know the drill here probably by now, so fire away.
Thank y'all for having us. We'll start off with our, with our questions, you know. Excuse me. Uh, short executive overview of the fire marshal's office. Stokes County Fire Marshal's Office has committed providing Stokes County with a professional fire life safety program, comprehensive fire protection plan reviews, informative occupancy inspections, and effective fire and life safety code enforcement, uh, and definitive fire origin and cause investigations in order to reduce loss of life and property of Stokes County citizens. When we talk about the upcoming budget, the higher level thoughts and considerations, I have proposed in, in our packet here that I gave you all, there is some information about response truck. We would, you know, the goal would be to try to do two. We, we know that that's going to be a, a budget item that's, that's going to be pretty large. The other thing would be, uh, reinstate the deputy fire marshal position that was a frozen position a few years ago. And, uh, to streamline our plan review and permitting process. Those are, are some of the higher priorities for the, for what I see for the fire marshal's office. With the training, we, uh, we are continuously furthering our education to try to be the most up to date at knowledge based service that we can be. We provide multiple, we attend multiple hours of training to keep up with the ever changing fire service. The, the fire services is, these days are not as, you know, it's, it's more evolved. People expect more. They, they want to, they want to get more for what they're, what they're paying. You know, these, these trends are across the United States altogether and it puts more pressure on the fire departments, uh, each year. The staff, the guys we have, they maintain multiple certifications and are required to attend more, you know, different conits for different, um, certifications that they have. When we did have the part-time program, it was a little easier to get guys to go to these programs because with fire marshal stuff being based out of Raleigh, a lot of our trainings are east, down toward the coast. They don't, you know, it's, they do very little in the central. It's always either in the eastern or western part of the state. So we do have to travel a lot to get these classes in. Our fire investigation seminars, they hold them twice a year. One's at Myrtle Beach and the other one in Burlington. So that's, you know, it's kind of hard to take two guys and send them at one time to training when there's only three of us. So we have to try to rotate to get to those classes. And, you know, as far as looking at the professional development of our, of our staff, I feel that our staff should be trained in all aspects. AJ and Preston shouldn't, shouldn't feel like that they don't know the same things that I know. We, we all need to work together. So if something does happen, all it does is take one to step up and be ready to move forward. So I try to encourage them to get any trainings, anything that we can move forward with, you know, and, and try to share the responsibilities. When we move it on down, you know, talking about turnover, the fire marshal's office has not had a lot of turnover over the years. The, the biggest turnover that we had was several years ago in 2008. The, uh, county manager at the time, uh, felt like that there needed to be a reduction in staff in the fire marshal's office. So they did away with, uh, two positions at that time. And that was, that was the response truck that we had at that time. We had the, this, two assistant fire marshals that rode that truck and responded to calls to help the fire departments. And like I say, in 2008, it was cut out of the budget.
That was Brian Steen, was county manager.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Since I've been fire marshal, I've had two retired, uh, and then I had one that, that actually quit and went to another service. So it's not been a lot of turnover. The, the Forsyth Tech program over at Medicine. Only, you know, we, we do try to hold classes at Forsyth Tech, try to do fire classes for the fire departments. The one thing that we do run into is the fire training facility in King is a very nice facility. It is, it is super nice, state of the art. But it's hard for a lot of your volunteer fire departments to travel to King and take, because the ones that are doing the training are a lot of the same ones that are running the calls. So if you take your department and you go to King for training, then, you know, we've got to try to cover those areas while these folks are gone. So it is a struggle to get folks to go over to, to King. You know, I would love to see, maybe not as state of the art as, as. You know, I would love to see maybe not as state-of-the-art as, as that one is, but there's some, some other training facilities across the state that, that were built at a lower cost. You know, I would love to see a training facility in the center of King, or in the center of the county.
What would that entail?
What?
A tower and what else?
Yeah, it has to be for, to be counted as facilities training for the fire departments, it has to be three stories. There's the one that they just built in Kernersville, Kernersville Fire Department, you know, it's built out of shipping containers. So there's, there's a lot of different ways to do it, it doesn't have to be a concrete and steel structure, but there's ways of going about it. Like I said, I, I would love to see that come to the Forsyth Tech area over here so that all the fire departments could get facilities training, whether it be, you know, the county helps and, or whether it be something that Forsyth Tech's able to do in the future. Short-term, long-term goals for our organization, like I said earlier, I would, I would love to be able to reinstate that deputy fire marshal's position, which would allow to help with day-to-day operations, fire investigations, inspections, fire suppression and emergency management. Right now, the guys rotate every week on call, so AJ's on call this week, Preston will be on call next week, and they, they're back and forth every week. With fire investigations being as time-consuming and labor-intensive as they are, we always try to, I, I try to listen out on the weekends while they're, you know, if they're on call or at nights, so if one of them goes out, they need extra hand, well, somebody else can go with them. So, you know, I'll try to help cover that so that they're not by themselves doing a fire investigation. If it's just a small room and content fire, or electrical panel shorted out to take a handle on their own, you know, it's no problem, but if it's a fire that we've gotta get in and dig out, obviously if it's a fire fatality, we're all going, it's, it's all hands on deck at that point, all, everybody goes out. Or if somebody is injured in a fire, a citizen's injured in the fire, we'll have a, a Fire Marshal at the scene doing work while somebody else can go to the hospital and try to follow up on the patient and injuries. That would lead into the implement, implementation of the 24/7 response truck. You know, this, my goals would be for, if we were able to reinstate that truck, or add two trucks, would be for them to do fire suppression, technical rescue, and hazmat response across the county, as well as backing up EMS response and emergency management. These guys are, these folks would be, would be able to go out and help the fire departments conduct training on their normal Monday nights, or whatever, they would rotate around stations and help do training. Another goal I would love to see would be the coordination and bulk buying of, of equipment. We, we proved it to be beneficial a couple of years ago when we bought some air packs and some SCBA, self-dident breathing apparatus bottles, and that was, you know, we were able to buy extra stuff for less money, just because of the, of being able to buy and bulk.
So let me ask you a question, if, especially with the fire trucks not cheap, so if, if a fire department wants to replace or add to the fleet of a fire truck, I mean, is that, do they go off the state contract? They get back off the state contract for the bid, or what?
Some, some stuff we're able to buy on state contract, a lot of your larger trucks, the fire engines and stuff, like, we buy a large engine, it, it may not be able to be a state contract purchase, or it may not be on the list. But like with the smaller trucks, a lot of times they can buy on state contract. What we have ran into, a lot of times that these companies that build these trucks, well, like I say, if it's a custom cab truck, then it's obviously built in-house, but with a lot of the conventional cabs and like your Ford F-250s, 550s, a lot of these contractors that build these trucks buy so many of them that it's just as cheap to buy through them as far as a chassis as it is to buy state contract. But yeah, that is an option, there has been some fire departments that have went through the county purchasing here and were able to get it in state contract pricing on, on cab and chassis.
I guess my second thing is, is, I mean, I, I know, you know, we each, we've got a lot of fire departments, we've got a lot of fire chiefs, but we depend a lot on each other, on pretty much almost every call that goes out. So is there a, is there a master plan, or is there, is there something that, that makes sure that, you know, that we don't just have a fire department on their own purchasing a certain type of vehicle, or a certain type of truck, to where as we know in our, with our response plan is built in, when, especially when it's going to 911 and they're pulling up the screen on to make sure, I mean, how do we know that, that we have the capability equipment-wise to get to the scene if there's not like a standard? I guess what I'm asking for is, is there a standard specification that you have to meet through the fire commission or through you, for them to purchase a type of truck?
The state of North Carolina has a set on minimum requirements for a Class A engine for a, for a fire truck. There's, there's minimum standards that they have to, it has to have a certain size pump, it has to have a certain size tank to hold a amount of water, and it's gotta have a, to be a rated fire department, you have to have certain equipment on that truck. So that kinda holds them to, you gotta have this, this minimum of equipment. When the fire departments want to buy a truck, they come to the fire commissioners and request to, to purchase a truck, and the fire commissioners approve the financing or not. But as far as the county actually having a standard, we just base it off of the nine, the state Fire Marshal's Office, 9S inspection of requirements of the fire engine.
So I mean, you feel comfortable that, that throughout, you know, with the numerous departments that have to be paged out or dispatched out, whatever the type of incident it is, is that, so we've got the equipment, the type of equipment is well-rounded, positioned around enough that it'll, it's not gonna be a cause for concern, that we can get the job done quickly?
Oh, you know, when, when we talk about the fire, the fire side of it, when we do the inspections, the 9S inspections and the ISO inspections that are done by the state, they, they tell the fire department at that point whether, we can base it off the flow rate of the fire flow of that district. So you may have a fire department that has a two-engine need, so to meet, to meet the standard to operate at a lower insurance rating like they are now, they, they may have to have that two-engine need, so they would have to have two engines and a tanker. You know, you may have, have a department that would have a three-engine need, and that's all based off of the ISO calculations of the state.
So, do we have, I know, I think it was last year I saw a publicity to come out that, of a lot of reductions in the ISO rate. Are all of the volunteer fire departments, are they below the, the minimum standard that it takes for the ISO to be a fire department or fire rescue?
Everybody, the minimum to be a rated fire department is a nine, and everybody meets that nine. We've had, we still have two departments that are rated a nine, and all the others have went through a rate reduction and have got fives, fours, you know, in that area. So there, there's one six, is that right? So all of them are six fives or fours across the county except for two that are still a nine, and they are still considered a rated fire department, yes, it's just they haven't been able to lower their insurance ratings for their district.
So it's, I mean, what is the, is it an equipment problem? Is that why the, the departments can't get below a nine, or what?
No, it's not an equipment problem, it's just they haven't went through the process yet. They haven't, a, a fire chief has to request a rate reduction, and at that point, they have, they give us a call, they say, hey, we're ready for a rate reduction, I'll contact the state Fire Marshal's Office, we try to schedule it, and with the other departments, once we scheduled it, we went out and kinda sit down with them and said, okay, this is stuff that they're gonna be looking for, we've been through several of these rate reductions, so we kinda go out and try to help them do a preliminary inspection before they actually get the state there. So we try to, try to make sure they're hitting all the key points and getting all their paperwork together, it's a lot of.
Is it a lot of paperwork?
It is a lot of paperwork, there's a, you know, you've got to go back three years on ladder testing, hose testing, truck maintenance, call reporting, training, so there's.
It could depend on how good the fire department keeps their paperwork.
Correct, and that's the reason we have tried to go out and, and talk to the fire chiefs and stress to them that maintaining your paperwork and keeping a tight ship on that is very productive in far as moving forward with your ISO and maintaining it.
I know that in terms of the contract that the county has with the volunteer fire department, the various fire districts, I think that, I know a discussion that I'd like to have with the board, and of course with you, is I, unless there's just something I don't know, other than for what you're saying is, is I would like to see the minimum requirement on that contract, whereas you gotta get better than a nine. I mean, we, I mean, the experts can weigh in, you know, on what that number would be, but I think that, I think our county, our residents, they're, they pay a tax, and I think that it's not, if everybody can do it in Stokes County except for two fire departments, I think that's a problem. I'm not saying we don't help them, 'cause we need to help them, that's not the problem, but I, I'm, I have a hard time, I have a hard time just ignoring and setting minimum standards for, for fire departments when times change. And I think that's reasonable, and, and, I mean, I love public safety, and I wanna support them, but I don't think that, you know, where it comes to tax dollars, I think that bulk purchasing needs to be done as, as a standard, not as an option. And I would really like to get more clarification on, you know, do we have the, do we have the right equipment at the right stations? And another reason I'm, I'm going into this is because, you know, we're gonna have growth here in Stokes County, and it's just like what's going on in Sandy Ridge, we gotta make sure that in, in terms of Mr. Carroll and his operation with his business venture, as it, as it comes into, into, into effect, I mean, we gotta make sure that, that, that we do the right service, but we gotta be thinking ahead. We can't continue to say it's the way it's always been here, and, and that's one common thing that I'm so tired of hearing every single department that we command, I'm not blaming the departments, I'm not even blaming the volunteer fire departments, I mean, God knows, I mean, thank God that we have them. But what I wanna do is, you know, if they need whatever they need to get down to whatever rating that we would, you know, come to an agreement to, I wanna help them. And again, it's not just change tomorrow, but we, we gotta have goals and we gotta have plans. I mean, we have everything from, at our education system, where the buildings are falling down, we just had animal control in here, and, you know, they've still got equipment from 1970. It's just, it's, it's frustrating, and I appreciate everybody that works for Stokes County, 'cause it's a, it's difficult, not having money for training, not having good professional development, but we gotta have those hard conversations, and I don't wanna, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I don't mean to put the other commissioners on the spot, this is just my opinion, but I, I've just never been one, you know, when I worked, it was, you know, minimum standards really wasn't something that was a goal. We typically did things differently, if we couldn't meet minimum, if we just met minimum standards, we probably didn't have a job long.
That was one of the things when I got, came into the Fire Marshal's Office, one of our first goals was to try to get some fire departments to lower their insurance ratings. We had two departments that kinda took that step out on the ledge and called the state and said, oh, we're ready, and, and took that, that leap of faith, and were able to lower their insurance ratings significantly. And then once then those departments did that, then some of the other departments were like, hey, I, I can do that too. So we started the building off that and were able to go across the county, because my feelings, my personal feelings, a lot of times other than when you call 911, a lot of people say, well, you know, we spend a lot of money on fire trucks and equipment, it sets up there and it's never, never does anything for me, you know, and as long as you never need it, then that, that's perfectly fine, but the only way that the fire departments could really give back to those community members who don't call 911, or don't ever have a house fire, thank goodness, was by lowering their insurance ratings. And that was, that was what the goal was, was to try to give back to, to the citizens, because there were a lot of, a lot of people messaged once we started doing that, you know, hey, I, I saved $400 on my homeowner's insurance this year, $200, you know, and that, that, that's the way to give back to the community, and the people see that, well, the fire departments are really, really working for me and, and giving me a good service. You know, if, if they weren't there, then we wouldn't have any, you know, we would have no insurance.
Yeah, and it just, and it kinda, it's, it just, I think it's paramount for public safety and equality of life, and here's the thing, I mean, ourselves and our families and our friends, I mean, we travel throughout Stokes County. So I know in a, in a municipal, I'll take municipal 'cause I know that better than I do county, so I'll take it in a municipal fire department, that would be unacceptable if one sector that, of, of fire station, substation is covering, had a very high ISO rating, that, that wouldn't be tolerated. I mean, we would, that battalion commander would get assistance in, in getting up to speed, but the citizens, you, you set yourself up for disparity, and you can, you know, you can turn that any way that you wanna do. But I, I don't wanna dwell too much on it, but, but I, I am gonna look at the, I would like to see us move to a minis, minimum standard that's a lot lower, that's more efficient than a nine. Or, but let me say this, I'm also willing to provide whatever assistance they need from the county to get that done, but we just need a timeline to do that, so I'll, I'll lean on you.
And that's what we did before, I, Jake was the county manager at the time, and I went to Jake and told him, I say, we're, these fire departments won't lower their insurance rating, my guys are gonna have to go out and spend some time. And, you know, we would spend sometimes as much as three or four days with a department just looking at paperwork, and so, and he was fine with that, and I, and Shannon's always been willing to let us do whatever we needed to do as far as that. You know, it's, sometimes it's trying to get them rowdy and say, okay, let's, let's pull the trigger, let's go with this and make it happen.
I got a question. So since each volunteer fire department is kind of autonomous with their own, I mean, is there any way? I mean, is there any way to force them to do this or not?
That would be with the county contract that you guys have with the fire department. Like what Commissioner Chandler was talking about, you could write into that contract that, you know, we come up with a obtainable ISO rating.
Do they have the manpower to get there?
Well, in order to be a rated fire department, yeah, they would- they would have to have that manpower. You know, like I say, and that's the reason I said an obtainable. You know, everybody across the county is not gonna be able to go to a four or a lower or three, you know, because some people's not gonna be able to get the training requirements. They're not gonna have the municipal water supply that some of the other areas might would have. There's a lot of stuff that plays into it as far as how to get those lower numbers. But there is obtainable numbers in there that is a group I think you could come up with and say, well, and I'm gonna just throw this out as a number, say a seven. So if you said, we want everybody to be a seven, that is a perfectly obtainable number that any department in this county should be able to obtain and maintain. Now, you know, some, when you start getting into lower numbers, a good year could fluctuate. And that's the fire departments, you know, the state requires you on a structured fire, have one engine and four people. So if today, during the middle of the day, who said fire department gets a fire, and they get an engine out and they only have three people there, well, their fire department's now in noncompliance. So they will be reported to the state. And the state would come in and say, okay, well, chief, you're gonna have to send me your fire reports for the next six months. And if this doesn't happen again, then we'll take you off noncompliance. If it continues to be a trend, then they come in and start digging and looking of why you can't get folks out on fires. So, like I say, you know, an obtainable number would be a good goal to shoot for.
Is there a place to look up those ratings, like by fire department in the county? Like, are they posted, listed anywhere? Probably not.
They're not. All this information's on the OSFM website, but there's not a place to look to see where said fire department has this rating. That could be something we could come up with, but-
Be good information if somebody wanted to look it up. I know, like, people who are buying homes, some people might not care, but other people might want to look at that so they know what their homeowner's insurance is gonna run or whatever.
And the state fire marshal's office does report the ratings to all the insurance companies. So everybody's insurance agent is aware that wherever they live, that the department does have a lower rating. Something that we did run into when we were first lowering the ratings is a lot of the insurance agents didn't want to lower the ratings for their homeowners. But we had to actually type up a letter from our office, or the fire chief may type up a letter to send out, hey, we did lower this rating. And really, they're required to lower it, otherwise the insurance commissioner will get involved.
Mm-hmm.
I did not do, so-
Does that money go in their pocket if they don't lower it?
I feel like it would, yes, sir.
Yeah. People should probably, if the ISO rating gets lowered, they might want to check to see if they saw that reduction.
Absolutely.
We, uh, we tried to push out every time a fire department would lower their insurance rating. You know, we released it in the news media.
Right.
We did it on Facebook and tried the fire departments to put it on the signs outside of their building. Hey, all your insurance company. We had- we've had several people call, and we'll have insurance agents occasionally call the office and say, hey, you know, my client lives in this area, what is their fire department rating? There is a few that do reach out, but usually it's because the client called and, hey, I need a-
Right.
Rate reduction.
Yeah, could y'all send Shannon a copy of all the ratings for each of our departments? Email it to her, so she can give it to us.
Yeah.
Amber one.
Good information.
We could probably see about getting IT to put it on our website as well.
Yeah, I was just pulled up your website and was looking at it as we were talking.
That'd be good.
Uh, mm-hmm. You've got a pretty good website here. You can always- there's always more stuff that can be put on here, but it looks pretty good.
Right, and we try to, with our website, have all of our permits and like at where you can go on and print a permit, all fill it out.
What if you could go on there and interactively fill it out and submit it?
Now you're stealing my questions.
That would be even cooler, wouldn't it?
And that kind of goes into my thoughts on streamlining our plan review stuff as well. Right now, we're having to get paper, sets of paper plans, and we've got an office full of-
Oh, man.
Uh, you know, if we could do electronic plan review. We had budgeted and was approved for the equipment to start moving toward electronic plan review. So as a contractor, you could submit them. We could do the plan review right there, and as soon as we do it, you see it. It's right there.
That's awesome.
That would be too simple.
I'd do that every day.
So now-
My house.
Right, so you're familiar with it of how that works? And it's so much more streamlined and so much more cost-effective for the contractor and the consumer in the end.
Now, talk me through, do they submit you the drawings?
When- when somebody's gonna build a commercial building, you know, that- we have to get three sets of plans. So one set goes, or two sets go to building inspections, and one set comes to me. So then I do the fire and life safety plan review on it, and I do the, uh, we do all the measurements for the occupancy, the exits, and stuff like that. So we do the plan review on what the fire code requires. And then we submit that information back to the contractor.
Right, with notes.
Yeah.
See, we submit to a engineer electronically, and everything is done redlined and comes back to us, approved as noted in the red lines. I hadn't seen a roll of drawings in years.
Come by my office. That's certainly out of the-
No, I don't want to bring back into memories. That's a fire hazard.
But we, uh, we had got it through the budget last year and still working on getting it in.
Let me ask you a quick question while I'm thinking about it. So I know in reviewing our service contracts with the fire districts, I know they're required to do an audit each fire district. Shannon, do you get a copy of those audits?
There's always been a copy of those provided to our office every year.
And then, do they have to go to the- to the state fire marshal, or is it just stay- stay here?
She- Shannon gets a copy of it, and then we keep a copy at our office-
Okay.
-of the audits. And then that's provided to the, a copy's provided to the fire commissioners when they start working on budgets, so they can have a- they can go through the audits and look through them to see what's on hand and what's out there.
What are you needing to review these drawings, a bigger monitor?
Well, what we're looking at is, uh, it's called an eye plan table. And it's a bigger monitor that is touchscreen, so you can go on and when you do your plan review, you actually can write on it and do your plans, and then you submit it back.
I am not familiar with, okay.
And you, it's, like I say, we deal, I've been dealing with, like Guilford County, a lot of these other counties that have- that do electronic-
Price tag on there.
It was, uh, being $11,000 for the- for the whole, that's the computer that runs it, everything. It's all self-contained. So it comes with a, where you can angle the screen up to where you can work on it at this level, or we can lay it flat. Like I say, we were able to, we put it in last year's budget, and it was, uh, it was approved to be purchased last year in this budget.
What've we been waiting on?
Just getting- getting things ordered. I mean, it's-
Getting them ordered or-
Well, it's been, it's, yes, it's been submitted to purchasing and to IT. We're just waiting on the process to go through.
Getting ready for February.
Have to have approval. Eye computer equipment, you know, it has to go through IT before purchasing can order it, so that's-
Better make sure it's encumbered, because we're looking for money for animal control.
It's approved in their budget, it's just, it's made it to that point where Glenn has ordered it. It's with them now to do the-
I assume you've got space for it?
Yes.
And one thing too, it's interactive between our office and building inspections. They can see our notes, they can- we can see their notes.
Are they gonna have something similar?
I know they, speaking with some of them that have been up there, you know, they're looking to go into an electronic plan review. I can't speak on behalf of their department, uh, but-
They need to look into that.
Doubt they got it.
Yeah.
But they, that would get them up to the 21st century.
Well, in that way, when, like I say, if I- if I go in and do something on the plan, you as the architect, contractor, you see it, building inspection sees it. So it's all meshed together, so we're not having to shovel paper-
We have witnessed ten-story buildings being built with no paper drawings at all. I mean, you've got people in the field with iPads. It's pretty amazing.
We, uh, we had requested to get iPads for our office to be able to use when we're out doing inspections, because the software that we run now is called ESO. ESO works really well as far as doing inspections out in the field, as far as using an iPad, being able to interact with it. It's a little more easier than using a Microsoft-based product. We do have laptops in our trucks where we can go out and pull up free plans when we're out doing businesses, business inspections and stuff, so. And this would also, with doing electronic plan review, we could automatically transfer them into that system. So if AJ's out doing an inspection and ten years down the road, we go do an inspection on a business, well, now something's changed, they went in there and tore out walls and done something. You know, we can go back and pull the plans up and say, hey-
Can I make a suggestion? When you need to replace that laptop, get a laptop that turns into an iPad, you got both. It costs more, but it's cheaper than buying one of each.
About 11:30 is when you're supposed to have Eddie McGee and Tori here. Eddie has another meeting at 1:00. So I just want to pause for just a minute and see, do we want to reschedule Eddie for a different day? Because obviously, we're not close to being finished with this yet. And then you have the DRC that will be coming at 12:30. Um, so I just want to give Eddie some information on what he needs to do.
He has another meeting with-
About 1:00 in King. He should have been finished here by 12:30 to leave for that. If he wanted, but that's not gonna be the case, so I just need to know what to tell him.
That's rescheduling. You think reschedule?
I agree, reschedule.
You good with that, Ronnie?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, just rescheduling. Maybe add a closed session at the end that's not scheduled. Maybe we just have something there for anybody else that couldn't get here or something. Do it all at the same time.
Eddie in the closed session? Do Eddie and then a closed session?
Yeah, and then a closed session or something, you know, something like that, maybe.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to do that for you.
That's good, yeah, we don't want to keep people waiting.
Don't want to keep them waiting.
Address your little comment you made earlier about the fire departments, that they're independent corporations with separate boards and directors, so directing them to do things-
Right.
It's not always the best approach. I would like never the best approach.
All right, I'm going-
That's the model we operate under.
I'm gonna really-
Right.
I'm gonna really mess up this meeting. Every fire station I went to campaigning, before I left, they were talking about volunteer fire departments were gonna go bye-bye in time. And I- and I can see that. When do you think that will be? And we don't need, I mean, your best guess, because we need to be planning now. We don't need to wake up tomorrow and they need $90 million.
You mean volunteer versus paid?
Yes, I mean, uh, Danbury, I saw more young people there than I did anywhere. The- they're, people are getting old, and the young guys are not coming in there, our people. And the numbers are not there.
And you're correct. And it's across the nation that way as well. But here in Stokes County, like you say, there is a a group of volunteers that are starting to age out. You know, a lot of the departments don't have the younger people coming in.
I've even seen some people that are volunteer in several different volunteer fire stations, plus work full-time, you know?
Have y'all got a long-range plan for that, or thinking about it, or?
We've- we've been-
Or sticking your head in the sand?
We've been thinking about it, and we, this is a regular conversation around the the office that at times of discussing on what's gonna happen, how we're gonna get in front of this at some point.
There you go.
Uh, you know, that was my thoughts with the response truck. That puts boots on the ground with these fire departments during the day. You know, the ultimate goal should be at some point to staff fire departments, whether it's fire department staff and fire departments, or county staff and fire departments. You know, there's other counties that-
Would that be a slow process by each station?
There, Sur County had went through a process, they hired three, right, Agent?
They hired five.
They hired five, I'm sorry. They hired five people that are county employees, or they're association employees.
I think, I think the initial discussion was county employees, but I think what they ended up doing was giving them a lot of money.
Yeah.
Uh, and then each station done their own thing. Personally, I don't think that's a good process. It's kind of, there has to be requirements, and like Mr. Chandler mentioned, there, you gotta have, some of this stuff's gotta be streamlined. And in my opinion, they should be county employees, get the benefits, get to retirement, and be able to retain people. Kind of going back in history, the departments hired part-time people two thou- I think the first part was around 2008, 2009. But there was no plan after that. There was no, nobody had any vision, you know, what are we gonna do next?
Right.
And the departments kind of struggle with that program now, because like Mr. Chandler just mentioned, you might have one individual that works at three or four departments. You know, on Monday, they may work here, Tuesday they work here, Wednesday they work here. And on those other two days of that station that they worked at, there may not be anybody there. There's not enough to go around, so to speak. And when you talk about qualifications and certain-
Sam, just on the top of my head, just thinking about, you know, how they, how you have to pay for workers' comp, I'm just assuming that, so if you've got a guy that's popping around into three different fire stations, and each fire district is paying the worker's comp fee for the same person, but yet they do it for their individual district. So, to me, that's a waste of, uh, the money that, you know, that we're paying to cover for workers' comp.
You wind up paying workers' comp to be on the, a lot, you know, accident injury prevention and stuff, be a member of the North Carolina Firemen's Association. For that person to count on your roster, they have to be certified. So this fire department's paying for them to be certified in their department, this fire department's paying for them to be certified in their department. So there's a lot of redundancy when you have the same people that move stations. A lot of redundancy in the spending.
What we're running into now is, you know, this department may have great covers this week. They may have somebody working every day that's a part-time employee. Next week, they may not have a day covered, or they may only have two days covered. Or they may go multiple weeks where they're in good shape, but there's somebody there every day, and then they may not. It's kind of a crapshoot, so to speak, but-
So each depart- each volunteer department has some paid employees and some volunteer.
Correct. They are- they are giving money in their budget to hire a part-time person. And how they go about it is up to each department. The fire commissioners give them a certain amount of money. It's $36,120 is what they-
But if they don't hire nobody, where's the money go?
It stays in that department.
May not get any the next year, though.
Right, it could be cut out the next year. If they didn't hire anybody, then the fire commissioners could cut it out of their budget the following year.
And that's something the fire commissioners, they ask for, they want to see how much you spent the previous year.
So how do they do? I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something, but in my world, in order to be able to do something like that, it has to be some type of a budget amendment. I mean, how do they do that? So in other words, what I'm saying is, I would guess that 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 money just don't stay there, that it, that, I guess I should say this. So what prevents the fire chief from- So what prevents the fire chief from, let's say they only use $15,000 in salaries, but I need something over here? And so they move that money out of salaries and it goes over there. I mean, how do we?
Can they do that?
The board of directors can do that. And once that money goes to that, to that board of directors, they can move it around as they see fit. The only thing that we have right now that will address that is when we do ask for, okay, how much did you spend in salaries? Well, you didn't spend but $10,000 in salaries. Where did the rest of this money go? And they say, well, we moved it to do this. Well, obviously, you don't need $36,120 next year. You need $20,000 or $10,000, whatever, to cover the cost of your... So that's the only way that right now we can control or...
That's kind of like, uh, going after your horse after you open the barn door, knowing that come feeding time, you can probably catch it.
Now that goes back to what y'all were talking about a minute ago. Once the, once the budget is approved and the county gives a department their allotment of money for the year, that board of directors can do what they see fit. If they need to move money or not spend it on this and spend it on that, that's, that's up to them.
But they still got an answer for it someday.
Yes, sir.
For the next year.
And it should show when they're audit, too, is what they spend on salaries.
Well, who, Shannon, do you read the audits and look at it to make sure that you're not seeing any glaring errors?
Yeah, I mean, the audit, just like when we do our county audit, if there's any, like, violations or something that's not deemed right, they're gonna flag it anyway. But we don't usually have, we've never had that with the fire department audits. We're looking at a way for our county auditor to start also. We're talking to them about if they would be willing to take on doing the fire department audit so it'll be in the same format. Because right now, they use all different people. They all come in looking a little bit different. They don't read exactly the same way. I'd like to streamline them so that they look like our audit.
That's a good idea.
The same firms doing that. Probably a better deal for the fire departments to use. I mean, it's all the same money, just transferred from a different spot. They might give us a little bit more of a deal to do that and plus they'll all be in the same format. That's easier to, to look at them. Because right now, they're all over the place.
So each department, how, how do they buy equipment? Like, where does the money come from? Like, I don't know, I've heard, like, some departments have pretty big savings accounts to try to maybe buy equipment. I don't know what their money is used for, but where does that money come from?
The, you know, is, when the service district tax comes in, the fire commissioners, which is a, you know, is a division of you guys.
Right.
Uh, they sit down and look at the budgets. And each fire department submits a budget. We have a budget packet that they submit. The fire commissioners go through it and look at it and they decide how much money that fire department's gonna get. And most of the time, they look at their audit of how much money they have on hand. Uh, they look at what equipment needs they have. The, the biggest thing that throws a wrench into it is, is finance. When the fire departments come up and they want to build buildings or buy trucks, you know, anything that they have to finance. Uh, we started two years ago making a, having, requiring them to sign a li, a loan agreement because it, well, in the past, there was no loan agreement. So you just said, okay, this fire department can go buy a fire truck. You can finance it and we'll pay for it. And there was really nothing that said this was the terms, this was the amount. There was nothing that kept a record of that, other than the fire departments themselves. So the fire commissioners, uh, a couple of years ago, decided that they would create this loan agreement. So if my fire department comes and wants to buy a truck, I have to tell them, you know, who the bank is, what the terms are, the interest rates and all that, so that we keep a copy of it in their file in our office. So that 10 years down the road, uh, this truck should have been paid off in eight years. Well, now they're asking for money still to make this payment on this truck. Well, we can go pull their loan agreement out and say, well, you know, this truck was scheduled to be paid off this year. So why are we doing this? The, the fire commissioners have tried to start paying down some debt. You know, there's, there's a lot of debt in, in some fire departments. Uh, you know, buildings is always a, a kicker for debt. Uh, so, you know, they're working on some ways of trying to, to keep money out of the service district that take it off the top to try to help pay some of this debt off and get, get some of this debt down. The goal with the current fire commissioners that we have is, uh, to try to get to a point where we don't have to finance trucks, that where we, we can take and, and just buy trucks straight out and not have to really finance, you know? Obviously, buildings are a little different, but, uh, you know, right now, the, the fire departments have got some pretty, pretty decent, nice buildings for the most part.
I'm guessing too, there's no set standards. So like, you know, thinking in the future, if we do go to a countywide fire service full-time, is that you would think that you would want each station house have certain things. Maybe not have the same design, but certain things. And then just, it just, another thing that I guess just jumped in my head would be, I mean, obviously, you gotta make sure that if you get, like, a real extra-long ladder truck or... I mean, you gotta make sure that, that the size of your build, your station, the garage part that you, you know, that that, and so you don't want to be making a purchase before you get approval to add on to your station or, or, I mean, I mean, just... So if they want to add on to their station, I mean, do they come in with plans and say, you know, hey, this is what, this is what we're looking to do and why we're doing it this way? To make sure that we're thinking ahead?
Yeah, they, the fire department, the, the fire commissioners would require them to come in with a, with a plan of what's going on, what they're gonna do. Uh, and like I said, with financing and, and all that, of what, what the payment's gonna be, the terms. Uh, and goals, you know, each, each fire chief kind of knows what, what his station needs or what they're looking at.
Are those bid when it's, when it reaches a certain level money-wise? Is all that, is that bid out to, for the construction part?
That bid to the, to the actual department itself, to that board of directors to...
Yeah, see, I, the only...
I think they must be under some kind of requirement to bid for those kind of numbers. I would think, I mean...
My, my concern is, I just want to make sure that's tax dollars. And we just gotta, I mean, I want everything done right, but also want the best bang for our buck. And I just...
I, I should know the answer to this, but I, is LGC involved in buildings, debt for fire departments? Since they're separate corporations?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I don't think they are either. They probably should be. Because I don't remember ever doing any applications for a fire department.
We're not doing, we're not doing all the initial, like we do our things.
Yeah, to the LGC.
We have to bring documents in here to you all to approve and things like that, so...
See, the one, the one thing that, that I think we need to, we need to think ahead a little bit in terms of, I just speak from personal experience and I, I know how it is. But even in like police departments where you're a fairly large department, you know, each district commander or deputy chief, you know, we got sandboxes. And, you know, I can't tell you how many meetings you go into and they don't like you playing in their sandbox, even though sometimes you need to shorten the sandbox or extend the sandbox or God forbid, communicate with one another to work for, you know, the number one goal, which the, is the lowering of crime or whatever you're looking for. So I, I, I mean, at some point in time, it, I think that, again, I mean, I don't like... Someone has to have hard conversations. And, and I guess it's me, but someone's gotta have hard conversations in dealing with... Somebody's gotta drive the train. You know, the, the track can't continue forkin' out and forkin' out and forkin' out. We gotta have an end goal to make sure that we're spending as much as possible, number one, is efficiently, and then within some kind of cohesion. So not everybody is going off on a tangent that is not helping the county as a whole. But I guess that'll be some suggestions from you on where to start or, you know, how many fire chiefs we got?
There's 13 that serve Stokes County right now.
Okay, and then, so what, we got two that, that...
We've got nine departments that are in the service district. Then you've got Monaco, King, and, uh, Royal Hall. But there's nine departments that are considered service district departments. And then everybody else has a municipality. You've got this.
Explain a little bit about how the Royal Hall thing works.
Royal Hall has some district over in the Friendship Side, lower corner of, of Stokes County because that fire department was closer, I guess, at the time when that was, when that, those district lines were drew out. There wasn't anything in that area. Uh, that was prior to the, the fire station at Forest Hill, uh, at, down on Old Eight. Uh, so you had South Stokes, King, and then Monaco. So there was a big area in there that, that nobody was close to. So I guess that's what, when they contracted with Royal Hall to provide fire service in that area. And the same thing was kind of up around the Westfield area and, uh, before Double Creek Fire Department was built.
Francisco.
You had, uh, you know, it was a long stretch for Francisco or Pinnacle to come to those areas. So that's when they contracted, I guess, with Westfield and with a pilot, uh, fire department to, to help cover those areas up in that area.
We've got, we've got this model that has a bunch of separate corporations that are all independent, separate board directors for each one. And we contract with them for fire service. I don't, I, I guess at the time, whenever it was all put together, they, that was, must have been the, what they figured was the best way to do it. And make, and you know, it's probably, it's got advantages, probably, and disadvantages as well, doing it that way. I don't know what, if other counties or, if other ones do it that way or...
How often do they review it?
There, there are some. I actually got a phone call from a, from a fire, from a county down east that was just asking how the, did the service district tax? They just went to a service district tax and was gonna have fire commissioners and they were asking about how, how that worked here.
What were they before they switched? A county fire department?
Oh, they had, uh, each, each area had their own taxes.
Oh, okay.
You know, some counties like Surrey, they have their own tax districts. So if said district, their tax rate might be eight cent. Their neighbor's tax might be 12 cent, depending on the amount of money they can bring in. And they go to the commissioners and the commissioners will let them increase the tax or whatever. Uh, but whatever money you collect, it's kind of like Monaco and even Royal Hall's district. Those are tax districts. Whatever money's collected in those areas goes back to those departments. Whereas in the service district, it all comes to one big pot. Um, because really, in rural Stokes County, um, and Scott had Richard run the numbers a couple of years back, if we went to tax districts, you'd kind of have your have and have-nots. Uh, or you may have a tax rate in this district that's really high and then this one over here might be really low because of business and stuff like that. So that, the service district model works best for us, it seems.
Because you have, I'm sorry, Agent. You have to figure in the fact of your farmland, your deferred land, uh, county property, state property. You know, your state department takes up a, a huge amount of property that, that fire department won't receive any tax money off of. So you would technically, there would be departments, like you said, that would have the haves and the have-nots.
And everybody would have a hard time.
Because most of there is either county-owned property or, or state property. It's a lot that takes up their district.
You didn't know you was gonna be teaching today?
Hey, I'm, I'm good with it.
You know, this model may be okay, maybe it just needs tweaks. And if you, if you get buy-in from the, all these departments that are involved in it and do it collaboratively, then maybe there's nothing wrong with this model.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for. I'm, I'm looking to change the world. I'm just trying to make it work. We're working together. All I'm asking.
I don't know what you would go to if we didn't do this. If you have some kind of a county fire department, I have an idea that'd be a beast to operate.
Well, um, the biggest thing with, if you had, right now, there's no way with, with money unless you just found a big pot of money to be able to go full-time, pay people in every department and do away with, you know? We, we never could do away with volunteers, not, not the way it is in Stokes County.
Yeah.
We're not that, that big municipality that can, can do that. So we, we've got to still depend on our volunteers. But if we can, at some time, get ahead of this thing and, you know, ultimately, county employees are gonna be more favorable because you're gonna be able to provide them with the insurance, retirement, stuff like that, that they can be a part of local government. Uh, whereas your fire departments may not be able to provide the insurance and stuff. So it's gonna be harder for them to hire people. Um, and at that point, too, you could set a standard of person that you were hiring and they would have to meet these requirements. They would have to be able to do this. Uh, you know, and then Forsyth County does it now with some departments out there. They have volunteer departments, but the county supplements their staffing daily with a paid person. So they may have one or two people that are there that are county employees working in that fire station assisting the volunteers. Uh, you know, that's, that could be a model that would be looked at, you know, as a way to get a start. At some point, we've got a, and that was where I was going with our response truck, was try to get, start of putting feet, put boots on the ground of somebody who can... You know, maybe we don't have a problem getting fire trucks there, but we have a problem with getting some folks there that are ready to go to work. Uh, so maybe if we could start this and then try to, like I say, get ahead of, of the volunteer, volunteerism going down and try to then build a program that maybe we could supplement them with, with paid employees.
So like, so right now, and, and I, and this is everywhere in volunteer fire departments, during the day, that's, that's the hardest time where, you know, a volunteer can just drop everything they're doing to go run and get on a truck. So how many, how many fire departments do we basically have to dispatch?
On an initial, if there was a structured fire dispatch right now in this county, they would initially send six departments.
Six?
And then there's a possibility of 10, you know, anywhere from six to 10 being brought in, you know, additional departments having to try to help supplement manpower or, you know, if it's a large working fire, you know?
It's a lot of departments to have to dispatch.
And just to put it in kind of perspective, you mentioned 10. We, we had a fire one day during the day. It was after lunch. And they ended up with 10 fire departments on scene and we only had five people to fight fire. Um, and the assistant fire marshals was two of the five. Um, so what he's talking about is, is we're getting trucks to the scene. It may be these older guys that, that aren't, you know, they're still there and they're still important. They're getting the trucks there. If they ain't, can't fight fire anymore, they're not able.
Right.
Uh, they're very important. We need them. We gotta have to get the trucks there.
Certainly.
We don't have anybody going in and doing the hard work.
Yeah, I have, you know, I set this fire accidentally and got in trouble for it, but the, uh... It, it was a little bit of an education when I did that because the first ones there were the forest guys, Forestry Jonathan and company. And they had some capability to get started with that. And then Danbury got there real quick, like after that, I think. But, uh, when you start chasing up and down these hills, dragging hoses, trying to put these brush fires out, that ain't, that ain't an old man's work. That's young man's work. If you can't do it, you can't kid it out. You can't, if you don't have somebody can do it.
While you're talking about, uh, I think the assistant fire marshal was actually drove one of the fire department trucks there from Lawsonburg that day. Uh, like I said, they didn't have anybody that day.
Well, see, and, and to me too, which is even just as scary, because I know in, in city fire departments, you know, if they're, if they're doing a certain long fire and so fire stations are emptying out, the, the city fire department backfill. So, you know, they'll bring, they'll move certain parts of the apparatus or people to make sure that, God forbid, another fire or another incident doesn't go down. So how do you backfill when you've got 10 fire departments or, from throughout the county that are in one location? Like say if they're in the northern, far end of the northern part of county and then something hits back, you know, over towards the west or the south?
In our response module that, that 911 has, you know, we've got it built out of... In our response module that, that nine-one-one has, you know, we've got it built out of your first six departments, your next departments, and so on and so on. So at that point, you know, they would start dispatching the second or third end departments to a call in that area. A lot of times we try to, as the fire departments, once we start freeing up folks, try to start sending them back as quick as possible. You know, a lot of times, what I, what I told our guys when, when I hired them to the fire marshal's office, and AJ can attest to it, a lot of times during the day, we, we'll be out doing inspections and if a fire comes out, we may be, we'll be the first ones on the nozzle going through the door. We'll be, you know, fighting fire. So we're, we're not above helping pack hose back. We're not, you know, we're gonna get in there and do what we've gotta do to get the fire out and then we'll start our investigation. But, so yeah, the, you know, the fire marshal's office has to supplement, uh, for, uh, hard labor work is part of it too, to try to help make sure that the manpower's there.
Did the school system, uh, find somebody to teach the class? They're not offering that this year?
That's, that's, that's such a shame. I, I hate that they weren't able to find anybody that was able to pick that up and run with it. Because that was really gonna be a, a good program. We had a lot of interest, a lot of kids were signed up for it.
I know, I wish that they could get the, I think prob- probably the problem is, uh, the state's requirements for the, having to be like a certified teacher. And you're not gonna find very many certified teachers that also have the fire training background or both. Or you're not gonna have a firefighter that could teach, that wants to go back and get a four-year teaching degree.
How do they get around carpentry at West Stokes?
Um, well, I guess they're certified somehow.
They're, they.
They give you so long to get certified, but.
There, there is requirements that, that is, uh, to teach in the public, and I'm, I'm not familiar with it. I mean, I, I sat through the meetings and we went through all that when we were trying to build this program. I sit on the board for the one at Forsyth County now, when, uh, for the school system down there. But, uh, when we were building this program out, you know, there were certain things that the, the state required us as a, from the school side of it. And there was requirements from the fire marshals, the state fire marshal's side of it. And they had to, to co-mingle. And there was, I don't know, the classes, the CT cla- the CT certifications that they have to get to, to be able to teach in the, in those classes.
Yeah, they give them so long, they can start out lateral entry. Um, and I'm sure Commissioner Minnehaw can add to this, but then they're given so many years to get certified. But a lot of times when you're teaching and working, I mean, you have to do those classes online or at night and out of your own pocket. And it's just hard to get anybody to wanna do that. And, um, even though they're given time to do it, um, it's just, I don't, if the state would relax the standards to be able to teach some of these CTE classes, State Board of Education or whatever, then it would be a lot better to. Cause you, it's, mechanic's the same way. It's hard to find, you know, a mechanic that has the, the teaching background or the certification.
With, with our fire instructor certifications, we can go teach at Forsyth Tech. Teach fire instruct, we can teach fire classes all day long, go out to the fire departments, teach.
Exactly.
Go teach anywhere we want to, except for the public school system.
Yeah, that's what doesn't make sense.
So, you know, that, that kind of messes up there.
Yeah, that needs to be changed.
Yeah, we're over-regulated federal and state both, and that's why half our problems are caused by this over-regulation that we have to adhere to.
That's what we run into.
Hosts to schools and everything else.
With fire departments as well, to be a volunteer fireman, you've got to have a minimum of thirty-six hours of training a year. That's just to even be on the roster of the fire department. That's not getting any certifications as far as going out and getting your firefighter one and two or EMT. That's just to even be a member. So then if, you know, you as a, as a business owner or a, somebody who's working, raising a family, now you've got to go to classes at night to try to get your firefighter certification to be able to be fighting fire in, inside of a structure. So it, it puts a lot of stress and strain on the volunteers of trying to be able to meet all these requirements. And, you know, we can't do anything about what, what the state and federal government requires of us.
That's true.
Just forget our legislators to do it.
Yeah.
Possibility.
One avenue to start, for sure.
Kinda got off here, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we ran down the rabbit hole, so.
And with talking about the fire departments, uh, you know, we were able to lower the insurance rating. So we still have some areas in the county that are uncovered as far as a fire department. They're, they're considered a ten. So that's like having no fire insurance at all. These folks can't get homeowner's insurance or fire insurance, where it's gonna be very, very expensive.
How many areas would you say fall into that, like, maybe?
We had six in the county right now. I think we've got five, we counted up. If you look in the back of your booklet I gave you, there's a map at the very back page of it. And, uh, and it shows these areas. The six-mile insurance map is what we operate off of right now. Everything within, just say, Lawsonville's in the middle there. So Lawsonville Fire Department, everything that's within five miles of that fire department gets a lower insurance rating because it's within five miles of that department. Everything that's outside of that five miles is what is considered the six-mile insurance. They get a nine. And anything that's outside of a nine is considered a ten. And they, they have struggled with getting any homeowner's insurance if they, if they can. Uh, we've got a little area up in the, the Francisco area on one road there. The new substation at Francisco built really took care of a lot of that area up there. There was a big, a big area up in that, the upper left-hand corner that was uncovered. Uh, that, that substation they built took care of a lot of that. You see across the top of the Lawsonville Fire District, there's a little area up around Creasy Road, uh, and Virginia Line Road. The biggest, the biggest area that we have is down around Lynchburg. Lynchburg and, and eighty-nine there, next to Jabos and that area. There's a, there's a lot of properties in that area that, that are, as you can see, are in that white. Uh, and then there's a little area down here off of Stewart Road, Bumpy Hollow Road area. That's, that's kind of a struggle for the fire departments to reach. But like I say, that, those are, those white areas that are on these maps are the ones that are in a ten.
Let me ask you this too, along the same lines, but it's like even like where I live, I mean, I'm a half a mile off the main road. But I keep my product road. Wide enough and gravel to where y'all can make it up there. But, I mean, how do we, I mean, how do we fight a fire if you're, I mean, there's some places around me that, I mean, they back in the boonies and, and, and if it's rained any time in the past week, I've, I always say to myself when I go by it, I would, I wouldn't even wanna get out and go into four-wheel drive in my truck to get there, much less a tanker truck or a ladder truck to get up. I mean, how do we?
And a lot of your departments, you know, carry supply, I mean, you're gonna carry a supply line on a fire truck. So, and that's, that's where your fire departments, when they pre-plan their districts, so they'll go out and say, well, okay, we know we're, we're not gonna be able to get a fire truck up to this house. Or we're gonna be able to get one fire truck and that's it. So you lay a line from the road in, you get one fire truck in there that can fight the fire. And then you've got a, a supply line laid out to the road.
As long as y'all have it figured out, I'm good.
So, I mean, it's, it's.
Just kinda hit me, I'm thinking, good lord.
And then there's, there's times that you have to just sit in the road and drag hose as far as you can. I mean, there's, there's places like you say that you can't, that you can't get in. But for the most part, I mean, everybody knows their fire district and knows these areas of what it takes to, to address.
Yeah, some folks that design their place where you can't get in, for whatever reason. But like, I've been out with David and them, I mean, there's like, you just have to be in four-wheel drive and something with going over rocks and like a road's not even there, but they want it that way for some reason. Privacy, I guess.
I mean.
Whatever.
As long as they got it figured out. So do we have a plan? Is there a master plan about the six-mile thing? I guess that's my big main concern here.
I, we actually had, uh, mapping. They've got software downstairs that, that they can go in and put in, you know, if we built a substation here, it would cover this area. And they can, he can, they'll go in and tell you exactly how many parcels it'll affect and all that. And we've had him run maps of these areas that, that are, that are uncovered. And from talking with the fire commissioners, that's gonna be a goal of theirs as well, is to try to start looking at these areas and seeing, you know, hey, can, can this fire department support a substation in that area? You know, what, what can be done to try to help cover these areas? So the, there is a plan and can.
Unfunded, unfunded plan.
There you go, yeah, an unfunded plan.
Me and Ingo should be, how can we put the entire county in a five-mile? Because when you lower that insurance rate and all the people that live within five miles of a fire station reap the benefits. You know, like he was just talking about, the six-mile people, you know. And that's what the five-mile map's in your packet here, uh, you can kinda see the wide areas got bigger. And we, and like he said, uh, mapping has, has done some work and kinda seen where we could look at. Again, it's gonna cause money.
But you would think though, I mean, as a homeowner, I mean, trust me, I, I love living where I live and I'm out around people. But I, I would not have, I wouldn't have built if I couldn't have, if, if I didn't build the road. Cause, you know, even if it's just not, even if it's not a fire truck, if you need, the older you get, you know, with the, an ambulance and stuff like that. So I mean, I guess if the people, so I guess maybe some people just don't care. Maybe they just wanna live, live life the way life is and.
Well, even around that, that Lynchburg area of the county, I mean, that's, I mean, those houses are right on the side of the road and they're still outside of that, that mileage that the fire department can get there, that six-mile.
Yeah, I can see that. I mean, that's not really, you know, in the boonies, that's kind of.
And we, we get phone calls right regularly of people, you know, hey, I seen that my fire department done an insurance rate reduction. My insurance hadn't went down any. Why is it, well, because you live outside of six miles, you live eight miles from that fire department. So unfortunately, you don't benefit from it.
Ronnie, you got any questions or comments?
Uh, not really any questions. I just wanna comment just a couple things. Uh, I happen to be very blessed. I live about three minutes from the South Stokes Fire Department. And, uh, they can get to my house within two or three minutes. I mean, I'm only a mile and a half from the fire department. I just wanna say that as I've watched this grow, uh, I remember when South Stokes Fire Department was built. Remember the volunteers and the community, they, most of those people that started that fire department, we still have a few that are living, but many of them have passed away. And that's where I'm thinking, where are the comments made about what's our, uh, procedure gonna be to replace the people that are passing? Are we gonna be able to continue to get young people involved in this? And on this, uh, Double Creek deal with Westfield and, and the Royal Hall deal, uh, when you come down Friendship Road, there's a road to the right that runs almost all the way into Forsyth County. That's why they had to go to Royal Hall and that one. And the same thing happened with, uh, with Surrey County with Westfield till they got to Double Creek. But, uh, I'm just, uh, very thankful, uh, that, I, I guess one of the biggest things is is I've seen such an increase in the buildings and the equipment. And, um, I know you need staffing as far as maybe, uh, the amount of money you mentioned for the four-time staff person or whatever. But, uh, I take some of the fire departments that have been built, they're very nice. They meet all the requirements and the trucks. I know they're putting, a lot of fire departments, I went to a couple fire meetings, I think with Scott, like when I ran the first time in twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen. And, um, a lot of fire departments really were able to, um, take care of the money, build up amounts to where they can finance or purchase new equipment. And so the equipment, the buildings, I, I just think come a long way. And certainly, there's always what we're in for improvement. And as I listen to Keith and, uh, Mr. Chandler and Greg and Sonia, there might be some things that we need to move forward as opposed to planning and then proactive in the future. But, um, I'm proud of, I'm proud of what we've done in the last thirty years here in Stokes County with the fire department. And that's all I have, Mr. Churn.
Okay, thanks Ronnie. Hey, go ahead Scott, you getting close to the end?
Yeah, we, we can get closer to wrapping things up. I know we kinda got pushed for time. The other thing, you know, the question was what keeps you up at night? I've got a good group of folks that work for me, uh, work with me. I don't like to say work for me, but they work with me and, you know, but we, we do, we, you know, we strive to do the most effective fire inspections that we can. Always tell them, don't do anything that when we go to a conference, we're gonna be used in as, as an example. You know, I don't, I don't ever, I don't ever wanna be that, that one sitting in the group and, and they, they post, put up a picture of, did anybody see anything wrong with this? I don't wanna be that guy. So, you know, we try to make sure that we're, that we're doing the best inspections that we can. Well, the one thing that we do run into in this county, and with, with businesses, there's, I wish that, that there was a business license or something to where that somebody had to come in and say, you know, okay, I'm, I'm gonna go rent this store and I'm gonna turn it into this. Because a lot of times if, once building inspections do their inspections, and they, they, they do their CO on it. The only people that ever go back and do a regular inspection on those buildings are the fire marshal's office. So we may go out and it be a restaurant today. And then we schedule our inspection, we come out next year or two years, whatever that inspection rate is. And it be, if, if nobody's realized it, it, it may have changed owners, it may have changed occupancies.
It'd be a beauty shop.
Yeah, it could be a beauty shop. It could be, you know, it could've changed anything. And then when we go in and do the inspection, well, okay, we've, we've took a, a beauty shop and now we've turned it into a church or something, you know. So there would be, there should be, uh, there's hard, it's hard to track that down. We, uh.
Well, what's the, so, I mean, what, I, I, is it because you don't know right away? So like it could go a year without you even knowing that instead of it being a restaurant, it's now a, a beauty store?
Right.
And, and trying to get ahead of the requirements. You know, there's different requirements for different businesses and occupancies.
I wanna talk about extension cords.
You know, if they've already changed and they're already in place and here we show up because we drove by and saw this, they've been there for six months to a year. It may be a case where, hey, we gotta hold up here, guys, we, you gotta do this, this and this.
Well, what would, I mean, what county, and what, what county department would, would trigger? I mean, I mean, if they, if somebody is, is opening up a business or, I mean, would, would the tax? Tax department know that?
I don't know, I, I can't answer that.
And building inspections, I mean.
If, if building inspections go, a lot of times building inspections is notified, hey, if they're giving a set of plans, you know, they, we all communicate very well together. We work hand in hand with building inspections. So if those guys get a set of plans, they'll call me, hey, this, this, what's going on at this building? You know, hey, let's, let's work together on it. You know, hey, let's, let's work together on it. You know, that doesn't, if I choose to open up a business and not really, I just go in and say, okay, this building's here for lease. I lease the building, I open up a business. I may not submit a set of plans to building inspections. So at that point, they wouldn't know about it either.
Or you might try to get them around submitting the set of plans.
So people can just open a business, like if they're not in a municipality, I guess that municipality king on a cover, whoever kind of oversees or maybe they know about, I don't know how they, how they're notified or how they go about it. But if not, if it's in the county and not in a municipality, people can just go open a business without any inspections or nobody knowing it?
You know, new construction's easy because we're always gonna have a set of plans or we're gonna be remodels and move-ins is where we kind of run into that. And most of the time, we're, we're out and about in the county enough that we, we see, hey, so-and-so's closed down. Now, we get in, you know, everybody talks in Stokes County, so it's always so-and-so's planned to do this or that. And what we wind up doing a lot of times is...
Everything that gets shut down becomes one of those game and fishing huts if you're not careful.
What we wind up doing a lot of times is, somebody will come up and say, well, I heard that so-and-so's gonna open up a restaurant over there in that old building. So then we'll actually look up the phone number, try to get in touch with them, call them and say, hey, give us a call, let's get together and make sure we, we get your, everything done that you need to be done to be. Because, you know, if you go from a, from a hair salon to a restaurant, well now you've got to install cooking stuff, hood systems and all that. That's gonna require plans. So that was the reason that I brought that up was kind of, I don't know if that, if a business license is the correct word for it? Or how that could be that...
See, they used to have to get a, like, for in the city, you had to get what they call a privilege license. But I think the Supreme, the North Carolina Supreme Court tossed it out like in 2015 or 2016 saying that was an unconstitutional tax.
Maybe something that economic development could help you out with, maybe they give you a new list of like changes of business and restaurants. I know they keep pretty up to date for advertising purposes on what we have.
I mean, it's gotta be a trigger somewhere, county government, that the light goes on.
You should have to have some type of business permit or license, I would think. Maybe not a tax, but a permit and a permit fee would not be out of the ordinary for...
I mean, Shannon, do we collect any revenue off the regular business, just opening up?
I mean, and the tax department also, I mean, I don't care what kind of business you have, you have to file taxes. And you also have to do like the, oh gosh, the personal property that you get every year along with your taxes.
But what if you're renting the property and you're not a owner of it?
You're renting it, I mean, the owner would still do it, but you still have to, you'd have some, looks like you would have some equipment in there. You'd have to do things. I know they had an issue a few years ago with the tax office where they had to go out and redo a lot of those people that hadn't been paying.
Just need to look into that. Just look into it, yeah.
Can you be the one that kind of, you know, gets with Richard or the other department, whatever department heads that touches and find out? And like Amber said, economic development would, I would think, would have maybe a feel on it.
I agree with you though. There needs to be a way for y'all to be notified before another year goes by.
We, when we got this new ESO system, our software that we use, we went in and tried to build, that was when, you know, fuel prices were going up so rapidly. We tried to build our inspections in by fire districts. So we know that in January, we're gonna go do all the inspections in this fire district. Then in February, we'll move to another fire district. And we tried to do them like that, but you still always wind up with having to go back and do re-inspections. So there's, a lot of times we're out in the county, so we're, I mean, we're gonna see big changes. But then there is those few times that, and it doesn't happen that often, but it does happen. You know, that maybe a business owner rents a piece of property and they don't understand that they've got to submit plans or changes and, you know, that there's gonna be a change of occupancy and you're gonna need some different, different ideas of how to set your building up. The other thing, like I say, I really love what I do. I enjoy my job. You know, making sure that my, my employees and the first responders are safe. And it's always a concern. So I try to make sure that the guys that work for me, work with me, are trained to do whatever they need to do and try to be safe about it, you know, with the manpower, you know, going out. And that's the reason that, like I say, if there's a fire, you know, it's probably gonna be two of us there if it's anything major or all three of us. So they do, they do rack up much comp time as far as being out at nights and doing investigations. With the next part, we're talking about the salary budgets and overtime. We, we did have a part-time position. But we were able to, we had a part-time position and a frozen full-time position. So we kind of changed, we were able to hire the full-time position and go away with the part-time position. That goes back to the guys being able to go out and do training. You know, if we had a part-time position or either another person, like the deputy fire marshal position, it would make it a little easier for for people to do training and even rotating call. Because when we had the part-timer, that part-timer took a week of on-call. So it kind of gave everybody, every third week...
Would you be able to find a part-timer that's, that's got the qualifications?
The, that's gonna be a struggle now, is finding somebody that's willing to work a part-time schedule. You know, everybody wants full-time, full-time benefits. We were lucky with the, with the last one we had, he was a retired fire chief and had retired from South County Fire Marshal's Office. So he, he had all the certifications and he would have done it for free if we would have let him. I mean, he was just that, he just wanted to be that part of it. He, Randy was a great guy. But, you know, like I say, finding that person again is probably gonna be a struggle if you were able to find a part-time that was willing to do that. That's kind of going through this, these questions that y'all gave us. I know in a couple of the other meetings that I watched, there were some questions about the safety committee and accident review. Our office kind of oversees that. And I, in those packets that you got, I put some information about the safety committee and accident review committee and what they do, how it was created and all that. I don't know for the sake of time if y'all want to talk about that or not.
Let me just read through it. Let's read through it. I saw it back here earlier. Unless y'all have a question about it. I think it was well done.
My big thing would just be, based on what the guidelines are, what the policy is, is that being done? So in other words, is it just a policy and sometimes it's done and sometimes it's not? It's called past practice. So what is, is it?
The safety committee, accident review committee is very active. With, what we try to do is address issues throughout the county. You know, we had one, most of the recently, one was getting the cameras put in at the green box sites. You know, for the safety. There's been other things that were addressed over, since I've been a part of it, you know, maybe, which each department does a self-inspection each month. And they submit it to the fire marshal's office. We keep it on file. So they do a self-inspection. So if they see something in their department that maybe he's gonna throw a flag up, they, they realize that they need chainsaw chaps or they realize that there's something going on, they, and they put it in that safety report. And then we reach out to the department head or we reach out to Public Works and say, hey, you know, we've got this report, can y'all look into it? So they'll go out and do it and then they'll send us a report that it's been repaired as far as that.
Is there a report near misses?
As far as vehicle accidents?
No, say, say you got some maintenance people and they do something stupid that barely, barely missed causing an injury?
No. Um, it's the vehicle accident review board, we review, we don't review animal strikes because, you know, sheriff's department or EMS, we would have every one of the deputies and ambulance people in every time. Because they, you know, deers are deers and so we, we don't do animal strikes, but anything that's involving vehicle versus vehicle or a stationary item or anything that could have been an avoidable accident. Besides, like I say, I have...
What about if the, involved a deer, but the deer wasn't there and there's no damage, but the ambulance is in the ditch?
That, that would be a report, you know, if, just say we have one that there was, it came out as a deer and, or they said they swerved and missed a deer and hit a tree, then we would review that one. But as far as, like I say, just blatantly hit a deer and, you know, it's obvious there's, there's hair and there's always gonna be a report done anyway. And each, each car, each person that drives a car has a accident report that they fill out and submit it to their department head or whoever it is in their department that takes them. And that all comes to Glenda.
Is there an option to attend or is it mandatory the employee to attend?
Everybody is given, it's mandatory to attend. Some departments, you know, if it's something, you know, somebody, you know, we've had some issues at Madison Hospital where they pulled out and catch a corner of the, of the metal rail. It's very tight down there. Sometimes the department head will say, you know, I've already talked to the individual and they'll represent them theirself. So that person doesn't have to come in. But a lot of times this, that person will come in, we'll do it in here, they'll come in, they'll kind of go through and tell us what happened, give their spiel. And we'll roll it as it fault or not it fault. If we start seeing a trend of an individual coming back time after time or the department head recommends it, then we can go into our, what's called the NEOGO, which is the training stuff that we have here at the county through the Association of County Commissioners. NEOGO, we can go in and assign them like driving classes. And it's hour-long drive, defensive drivers course. And once they take it, they really don't want to hit nothing else because it's so boring. So, you know, we can go in and assign classes like that.
Is this on the computer or is it posted?
That's, that's on the computer. It's just a web-based hour-long driver's course. Now, there has been, you know, there were, we used to and they still do some, is do some defensive driver courses for EMS, emergency vehicle driver course for EMS employees. But as far as like normal county, county employees, we, we just assign that online training.
Do you push out a report monthly or quarterly?
As far as to...
So how many, how many wrecks are happening that are our fault? What type of wrecks they are?
Glenda looks after all that as far as, between her and Gail, we don't, I mean, I don't know that they provide Shannon with a report or not. I can't...
Well, Amber attends the safety committee.
Yeah, Amber's part of the safety committee.
That's one thing that she's...
Anybody else in that room?
There's a whole list of people that attend, that attend the meetings, but I'm just saying for our office, Amber attends those meetings.
An accident review is, is listed in that booklet. It's made up of fire marshal's office, EMS, sheriff's department.
Who chairs it?
I do. The fire marshal does. Well, the safety director chairs the committee. So I'm considered the safety director for the county. So we, we, our office looks after that. But it's made up of, you know, Public Works has a representative sheriff's department, EMS. So your departments that have a lot of vehicles on the road, kind of do the accident review along with HR and
So Amber, what do you do with it? I mean, what do you do with the report? Is there a report made?
Glenda would be the only one that would keep anything as far as like data from it because she's gonna do all the insurance claims.
Well, she doesn't send all that to Tiffany, the secretary for the vehicle accident review and the safety committee who works in your office. And she compiled all the reports and decides, I guess, proposal information about the accident reports and who needs to come represent and what the items are for the safety committee, like what the agenda items are and stuff. Different departments can send whatever they think needs to be on the safety committee agenda items. She'll put it on there. And we'll discuss it in the committee. But as far as the reports, I don't make any reports myself. I attend for admin as far as we know what's going on and everything. But I don't know if Tiffany comes up with it.
No, but I don't think anybody's publishing a summary.
There's not a, right, there's not a published report.
Minutes are taken.
We have minutes.
What I would like to see as a board, and if the other board members don't, will look at it, but I'd like to look at it quarterly, I'd like to see how many wrecks we have and how many, how much money we're paying out. I mean, I don't need to see names. I'd like to see it by department though. I mean, obviously names, names is none of my business, but I do want to see what we're paying out, what, you know, what type of, what type of collisions we're having.
Like I say, we quarterly, we'll have, we'll have a report of, like I say, once the accidents come in to Glenda, she sends them to Tiffany and we compile the best stuff.
Just somebody, also you have to, just somebody. I don't, I don't care who. Y'all worked that out. That's internal. And just make it simple. For the quarter of, you know, first quarter, we had fifty wrecks. Forty of them were not at fault, ten were. And then just list it down by departments.
I hope that number's way exaggerated for fifty wrecks in the quarter.
They, they address other things besides car wrecks though, don't they?
Uh, in the vehicle accident review committee, we just do wrecks, but then the safety committee addresses a whole slew of issues.
Yeah.
You know, we look at the, part of the safety committee is the OSHA compliance stuff. We, we set up, we have set up now working with the manager's office and all. Through OSHA, they have a consultative service. So we started with the fire marshal's office EMS and 911 was the kind of the guinea pigs with this consultative service. So they come in and they send us a representative. And they sit down and go through the policies and procedures, health and safety regulations through OSHA. And during that time while they're involved, we are not eligible for a inspection from OSHA. If, if an inspector shows up, we give them our representative's name's Abby. We give them her card and say, you know, this is who we're dealing with. And that's it. They, they leave. So we've, we've done that and we're, right now, we're going through Public Works. We've done all the green box sites, water. So what we're doing with part of this and what we've benefited from it is we now see with, with the consultative service, they come in, they make recommendations for us to fix. And we fix it, send them pictures of it and it's done with. Where the difference is if an inspector comes in, they're gonna tell us we got to fix it and they're gonna put a fine with it. So this consultative service has really helped out. And we started with our, with our departments that have the most, most probability for injury. So EMS fire and then with Public Works. We're working our way through the, the system. And part of the safety committee is we offer that out to to our committee members to go back to their departments. And, you know, if the health department wants to be the next one, then that's, you know, we'll just kind of go through and...
I mean, it's a good process. You're actually being proactive and, I mean, that makes sense. I appreciate that.
And we, we get an insurance report that has all the, what we claim, like what they've paid out for us. I mean, that in addition to what you're talking about would be what you're wanting to see.
Yeah. And we're required, part of our insurance to get the reductions on our insurance is we have to have the safety committee and vehicle accident review. So, you know, all that stuff is, is minutes are kept on it. And so that when we do meet with Miriam and those folks that, that we show them that, yeah, we're having, we have an accident review committee, we have a safety committee that's active. So then that reflects on our insurance premiums for the county.
That's good. I mean... That's what we go on.
There was something that you, you said to me the other day, or Tiffany said to me about, talking to them about the, the fire commissioners. And I just wanted to make sure you didn't forget.
Yeah. I don't know. I know y'all had met with some other committees. I don't know if y'all want to schedule a chance to meet with the fire commissioners that we currently have. maybe discuss some budget goals or something. I don't know if y'all wanna try to schedule one of those meetings in as part of this, or... Just thought I would kinda mention that out.
I plan on going to the Fire Commission budget meetings.
That'll be enough, in my opinion.
I just wanted to see if we needed to try to line up.
We'll get into that, we'll get into that anyway after they do their thing on it, so... Good idea to go to it, though. I used to go to it, the county manager, occasionally. Anybody have anything else for Scott?
Thank you for the report.
I appreciate it. Well, I do have one quick question. Why do they have that annual meeting in Myrtle Beach when it's in a different state?
They do it. I don't know why they do the North Carolina International Arson Investigators. They combine North Carolina and South Carolina, and they have it every year in Myrtle Beach. I don't know why.
Oh, okay.
I know why, but...
I guess somebody at some point likes to play golf and...
Well, I understand going to the beach for the meeting concept, but I thought it was really unusual to be in a different state.
Yeah, they combine the North Carolina and South Carolina International Arson Investigators.
Okay.
And do it all at one time.
Oh, okay.
Five minutes?
Yeah, five-minute break.
Hey, we're now back in session from our short break. And Laura's going to tell us about the Dave Reporting Center.
Here yesterday.
What?
I hope you all are doing well.
Yeah, we're doing fine. We're doing fine. You have any questions? Just the format. Just follow that format. And however you want to do it, it's fine with us. And then we'll have some questions back and forth at the end if we have any.
As am.
Congratulations on being in your new job.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. As for the short overview of our mission and functions, we provide pretrial availability to inmates without other financial means for release that meet within the criteria of eligibility. We provide pretrial availability to inmates with health issues that may not normally be within criteria, those who require hospitalization or other detailed medical services that are not readily available at Stokes County Jail. We monitor pretrial participants with daily call-ins, weekly drug screens, and personal contact visits. A lot of these inmates that, you know, we get out there, like I said, they don't have financial means for a bondsmen. And we have a very strict criteria on the ones that we will get out to be released back into the community. They can't be a danger or a threat to anyone. So in each person that we do, it depends, you know, there's a lot that depends on it. So there's no two cases exactly alike. But we do, by all means, keep the community safety and things in mind when we are doing this. We also provide supervision and training to offenders that do community service work. The probation office, we have a list and we're a worksite for them. And as a matter of fact, we've had one or two here lately every day. And they're doing a lot of trash pickup in non-mow-in season. We have, let's see, several sites that we do, the mowing and weed eating for on an annual basis, which includes the government center, the impound lot, probation, health department, DSS, courthouse, and the jail inside the fence and outside, the board of elections, senior center, the EMS and DRC air building down there, the old county garage, EMS garage, the prison camp, library, head start. And we will be taking over doing the mowing and weed eating at the new board of elections location when they get there eventually. But we will start that this season doing the mowing and weed eating down there. We normally work between 60 and 75 workers annually. And that's anywhere from 800 to 1,000 hours that we get from community service workers. It doesn't cost the county anything to get this stuff done. Brandon, our guy who, our community service coordinator, he is really great with this and doing training also because a lot of these people don't necessarily know how to operate a weed eater or lawnmower or something. We always put safety first. We have the proper personal safety equipment in order to, you know, make sure everybody is safe and doing what they're supposed to do. And we also provide drug screening collections for other county offices and individuals if they're in need of drug screening. We send this off to a lab and, you know, the results are sent back and then we distribute to whoever requested them. We are able to do this at a really good rate because we end with another group. And so we were able to get the rates really low. And so it's real cost-saving. I know the Department of Social Services and all have told me, you know, compared to what they have to pay at the hospital to get the same thing, that, so we're doing everything we can do to be cost-efficient for the county. The high level of consideration, if you have any for your next annual budgets mission. The thing I have, since our part-time employees were not in the salary study, we have three excellent part-time employees. And so, you know, that may be something for the next budget submission that I would like to put in possibly too. Kathy here, she has been here for over 10 years and she is, you know, she has helped us out. And, you know, we can call her about any time. She's always readily available to come in and help us. We have two others that help us out with mowing and supervise community service workers. And, you know, right now I feel like I have an excellent staff. It says address adequacy in our training in our organization. We do do training sessions annually and also do it within the court system. If they offer training for things to help, you know, with the process over there. Address any annual personnel turnover percentages or other personal issues. We don't have any, knock on wood, whichever place it goes here, that we don't have any issues with turnover at this point. Like I said, there, right now, there's two full-time employees and that's including me. And we are in the process of looking to hire another senior office assistant to help out where I can retire one of the jobs that I do or train someone to do what I did. And the next was provide my thoughts on Forsyth Tech Campus and capabilities. It's great to have a resource that close by. It really is. I always keep a check on available classes over there. There are sometimes things that I can refer offenders to, to help them with job training and such things. And if any of them are applicable for what we use, but I do always keep a good close eye schedule over there on what's available. So I think it's great to have them that close by.
Maybe it'd be good if we kind of try to take that to the next level and get some, maybe some kind of actual program in place that, you know, that makes it more comprehensive and takes advantage of what you're already doing.
Yes, absolutely.
I think Sally would be open to that right away, so.
Because, I mean, with our pretrial people and all, we, depending on what's chosen for them to do, I mean, they are sent sometimes for substance abuse training or for, you know, family counseling or whatever the need is. We do have resources that we will refer them out to, and that is part of their criteria to meet the program, to be able to get into the pretrial program. Our short and long-term goals is to make sure that this program continues to be an asset to individuals and to the county, savings for the county and taxpayers. Because everything we do down there, we, you know, we're doing our best to, I know one of the big things in the jail, like medical, sometimes maybe the person wouldn't necessarily be eligible. But we had a young man last year that he had a medical problem. We accepted him into pretrial. We accepted him in March and he was there through July. But in March, he left the jail and he was admitted into the hospital. He wound up having to have a valve replacement in his heart, 24 years old, young guy. But he was in the hospital from March until mid-May. So where he was accepted into pretrial, that wasn't a cost to the jail nor to the county. And so I, you know, and luckily, the young man's arrived and the charges wound up being dropped. And he's, this has definitely turned his life around, I do believe. We've actually got a thank you letter from him. He's come by because, you know, we talked to him while he was in the hospital. Mr. Hill and myself both went down there at different times to do contact visits with him. And, you know, he just saw this as a wake-up that, so I felt really good. And he was really grateful, along with the jail staff, that no one had to sit in the hospital with this guy for all this long. So we do things that, you know, to try to, everything we can do to help out and save the county. Let's see, the next thing I think was my, list the top three issues in my organization that, and if there's any that keep me awake at night, we're small down there, so we try to address anything that's going on at the time. You know, we're, we're too small to have issues. So if something's going on and somebody's not happy, talk to me. Tell me about it. And it was the same way with Mr. Hill. If we had an issue, we talked about it, we worked it out. So I, as far as issues, you know, anything like that that keeps me awake at night, I'd say maybe the only thing that I might wake up at 3:00 a.m. thinking, you know, is there something else that I can do down here to make things, you know, run a little smoother? Because every now and then, you know, those 3:00 a.m. ideas you wake up with, sometimes you get your best ideas, you have to remember to write them down, or you forget them before 6:00 a.m. when you get up. And then updates on the status of part-time salary budget, overtime, and comp time. As for our part-time, our salary budget is in line with our current needs at the moment. We don't have any issues with comp time or overtime because, I mean, we have it scheduled where things normally work. I mean, every now and then we might have 30, 45 minutes here and there of comp time, but nothing to, you know, raising eyebrows about it, I don't think. You know, just trying to finish something or something like that going on. And as far as to pose any questions to the board or any individual commissioner, I don't have any at this time. I just, any advice you can give me or any suggestions are more than welcome.
Want to take over a couple more apartments?
Do you have a, do you track your success rate? I mean, like, two forms of it would be, so out of the people that you get out of the jail to do work, like, do you have a percentage that complete the amount of work during their stipulated time? Or do we have repeat, kind of repeat offenders?
Okay. Normally, it's rare that we get repeat offenders out of jail unless it's, you know, like I said, the criteria is, you know, different on each individual case, depending on what happened. We do track our success rate on the pretrials we get out and we successfully get them through the court that follows plan and do things. Unfortunately, sometimes we do get some out that we have to call the sheriff's department or for arrest and have them locked back up again due to, we have very strict rules. And, you know, and I tell everybody right from the beginning, don't lie to me, don't lie to anyone who are on my staff. If you lie to anyone who are on the staff, it's the same as lying to me. They know what the rules are before they accept, they're accepted into pretrial. And normally, if we get them out and we have to lock them back up, or always, their bond is doubled. If they start out with a bond of 40,000 and they get out on pretrial and they fail the drug screen and they do things they're not supposed to, they get locked up again and the bond is doubled. So, and they know this all ahead of time. And we work, you know, we work with them. If there's services they need or something, I try to send them in that direction to get help to do these things. And yes, we do keep track of our successes and our, the ones that we have to lock back up. I'm sorry, I probably overanswered that question.
That's fine. Ronnie, you having questions?
Not any specific questions. How many, like, people would you say come through for help, like, in a week or a month's time?
Pretrial cases? Well, I mean, that really depends. Like I said, we have a certain criteria set. We may go a month or so without anybody. But this week I have interviewed two. And I'm not really positive that either one of them will actually be eligible due to charges or some outstanding reason.
Tell them that you have to go to the jail to interview them.
Oh, yes, I do. I go to the jail to interview these. Yesterday, I went to court in Judge Langdon's courtroom and there was a pretrial person or a person that was brought in that's in the jail. And he requested I go interview this person, and I did. So, you know, like I said, there is certain criteria, but I checked the jail logs, the jail sends me jail logs daily. I review them to see who's in there, what cases are in there, what the charges are. So, I mean, it varies. There has been months that we've had, like, maybe 10, that we've accepted. And there's been months that we didn't have anybody. But usually, a pretrial person can be anywhere on pretrial from one month. And the longest I think we ever had somebody was like two and a half years. And that's the court system, the way, you know, things are appealed and such matters is that.
Is there any peer support specialist in your, that work with you or for you that help with the people who are maybe pretrial, but they need some substance abuse counseling or anything like that?
Well, I have places I can refer them to. And I do have a list of contacts of several different organizations. As far as help with, Goodwill is a great resource with job training. I've been able to refer people down there into the clothing closet to help them out because I did have a young lady that, while she was in jail, everything she had was taken. But we were able to help her out to get some new clothes and things of that nature and some job training, and she did wind up with a job. So everybody's need is different. So depending on what the needs are, some of them do have somewhere to, most of them, it is a requirement that they have somewhere to live. I'm not going to entertain normally getting someone out who's homeless. I mean, you know, I can't take them home with me. And I'm not going to, so that would, and I know that may not be the greatest reason in the world not to get someone out, but you've got to make sure that there is support, that they have support in order to comply with the program.
So, do you ever get any people out and help them get into treatment?
Yes, yes ma'am, we do.
That's all I have.
Do you have any questions? No, she's done a pretty good job explaining everything. Y'all probably more familiar with this program than I am, but have you seen, I guess you've seen the increase every year? Or does it stay about the same as far as people?
Well, the drugs of choice normally change.
Right.
So there is a lot that have drug charges. And unfortunately, methamphetamines, we don't have a lot of luck with getting people out that has their choice. So, yes, it's all types of different cases that we see. And we do not try to exclude someone, but after you've done it for a while, you kind of know.
Yeah.
Like I said, the safety of the community is one thing. So someone who has, you know, broken into houses and all, I don't feel really comfortable.
What do you feel like your success rate is? That was a saluted question.
Well, I mean, normally, I'm going to say eight out of 10.
Wow.
So, on a normal basis, don't you think so Kathy? Because usually, I mean, like I said, you know, I know we've all heard, "I didn't do this." And we all know there's always three sides to every story. Not two, but always three. And so normally, we can tell pretty close right from the start. And, and that's why we have them call in every day. So that creates a pattern. So if I say call in every day by 12, they'll usually pick a time, 10 o'clock. Then all of a sudden, they're not calling in till 11:30. Five minutes to 12. Oops, I forgot to call by 12, it's 2:00 o'clock. So that is showing us a change in pattern of things that they do. That's why we have these things set up the way we do in order to, that way we know when to pull them in and when to say, okay, there's something not going on right here. Drug screens, we do rapid screens there and we send them off. So we have checks and balances that we look for to make sure everybody is, you know, following the plan and doing what they're supposed to.
And they may come in two or three times a week for drug screening.
Yes, absolutely. If someone we do get out does have a drug problem, we'll have them in there, like she said, two or three times a week. And so if you're drug testing on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, you know, it's not going to take as long to find out if you're not doing what you're supposed to. And some people really appreciate having someone to answer to. You know, they feel like, okay, I need this direction in my life. And so hopefully, if we can keep them clean while they're in the pretrial program, by the time they get their court date, maybe they've changed their habits. Maybe they've created some new habits that are better, is what our goal is, what we're looking for.
Hey Ronnie, you got any questions, comments?
No, I'm good, Rick.
Okay. I just, a couple things. This program, I've always felt like this program really pays for itself. I mean, to put the yard mowing and all that aside, it would cost us a lot to contract for that. But one of these medical emergencies or medical situations can throw us a budget amendment bigger than about any other way we can get one, just about, if it's a situation like you described. So from a double whammy there, it's really, I think, paying for itself, the program does. And then it's a, it's a common sense, smart thing to do, get people out of there if you can and try to get them started on a path back in the right direction. And you guys are good at that. Y'all still, how do you do this drug screening? How do you do it local? Used to, we sent them to California, I remember, or something. You still do that or?
Yes, they still go to California, but.
So they just have a cheap price, huh?
Yeah, it is at a, is at a very reasonable competitive price.
Like an outreach lab or something?
Pardon?
Like an outreach lab of some sort, I guess.
It is Redwood Technologies, Abbott, I think is, you know, how everybody changes their name.
Yeah.
Like I said, what time it is to know what the name is today. But we normally send them out FedEx Express. So if I send something out today, I'll have the results day after tomorrow.
Okay. How about the quick screens you were talking about?
We do them right there.
Oh, do you?
Rapid screens.
You read them there?
Yeah, I can read them right there. They, we, we're all trained on how to read them.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't realize that.
Yes.
What about your vehicles? Are you guys on a lease program with your vehicles?
We are.
Okay.
We are.
What do you have? How many vehicles?
We have the van, which is.
That long van? You have that long van?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the original one we have. We have another one that's not.
Like it?
Yes, it's like it. Which Brandon uses for our community service workers. And we have the trailer, of course, for all the lawnmowers, weed eaters, and all the other equipment we have. And we have a Ford Ranger pickup truck, four-door, that I drive to the jail and places like that. And if we, we're doing trash pickup and we don't have the one or two, rather than taking the van, we'll take the truck out. We've got lights on it, you know, for safety, for our community service workers doing whatever they're doing, roadside pickup of trash.
Okay.
Morning Brandon told me he picked up, it looked like a brand-new mattress and box springs on the side of the road.
One last question that you may have answered, you may have said this already, but does a judge have to approve everybody that gets out on pretrial?
Absolutely. We go through a procedure. We speak with the, normally, the arresting officer to see if there's any unknown things because, you know, everything's not always in black and white with the district attorney's office and also with the judge.
Okay, which judge? Superior Court or the?
It depends on, no, not necessarily any of them. It depends on where the case is. If it is in Superior Court, it has to be a Superior Court judge. And normally, whoever set the bond, whichever judge set the bond, is the one that we want to, you know, because there may be something else outlined that we are not aware of.
Okay, that makes sense.
Like yesterday, it was Judge Langdon who asked me with that one. And so he will be the one that will follow through on this, on whether we do accept this person or not.
Okay, okay. That's all I had. Do you have any more comment, Brad? Question?
I just liked the rapid score, rapid screen, drug test. So what's the reliability of that?
Well, we send it to the lab also. We do not do just rapid and, you know, I tell people rapid screens, just like pregnancy tests, it may say positive and it may not be, or may be negative and it may be the other way. So we wait.
That's one way to put it.
Well, that is in layman's terms, that's how we put it, that it could possibly be a false, a false positive or a false negative. That's why they always go to the lab afterwards. But, you know, they still would like to have a rapid, you know, we'll do the rapid. And then we do send it to the lab. And it's very, very rare that it ever comes back anything different than what the rapid said.
What's the process? So if they, let's say they were, let's say they fail the drug screen, whatever your limit is, and you want them gone from your program, do you have to go back to the ADA and they file contempt charge to get them out of your program and back?
No, no, that is at our discretion. And they, that is one of, we're talking about the pretrial. And that is at our discretion if, you know, just like if they don't call in, they don't, you know, follow the rules, they sign an agreement or contract with us when we get them out of jail. So if any of these things are violated, that's a violation of pretrial. Depending on, you know, what it is, if somebody forgot to call one day, I'm not going to, you know. But if something is going on, like they're coming in testing positive for meth, I'm going to go visit the magistrate. It, like I said, it will also go to the lab to be confirmed, but, you know, we rely on them, but I also rely on confirmation from the lab.
What's the funniest excuse you've ever heard for failing?
Let's see. Oh, well, I don't know. One, we did have a participant one time and I knew the guy was up to something. I mean, you know, you can just kind of feel it. So on the lab, I requested a pregnancy test and he came back pregnant. So I knew his girlfriend was pregnant. And, you know, somebody must have slipped it in my drink, you know, you always hear that. I've seen a bunch of interesting things down there in the past years of doing testing and it's like, oh really? Oh, come on.
The main thing is you don't have to go through a whole process of something. If the person has violated the contract rules or whatever, it's just what, you just call what? The judge? Go see the judge and then?
I just go to the magistrate and ask for order for arrest and.
The only thing, the only thing I, the only thing I know is that if it would go back to proceeding, if it's off a drug violation and if they're out of California, if they have the rights to, you know, contest it, they'd have to fly here to testify in order for it to be legally introduced into evidence.
Well, you know, it is, you know, and we made that perfectly clear when we do an interview, if you violate any of these rules.
Yeah, as long as, as long as it's based off, it's just a contract they violated and then you do the recommendation and you're not getting caught up in a, you know, in controversy when it comes to have to, you know, on a contempt hearing or something where if the guy gets a public defender and they want to play games, then, you know, that could be, but it doesn't apply here, so we're good to go.
Anybody have any other questions or business we need to discuss? Make a motion to recess until what date, Amber?
February 2nd at 1:00.
Recess Thursday until, until February 2nd at 1:00 p.m.
Make a motion to recess until February 2nd.
All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, okay. Recess.